This City Commission meeting is now called to order. Madam City Manager?
With those who care to do so, please stand and join me in the invocation. Dear God, we give thanks for this community, its committed leaders, and the opportunity to serve our citizens. As we come to the end of October, we ask special blessings on those in our community who have been touched by breast cancer and heart disease. Help us as we continue to bring awareness and work toward prevention and cures. Grant that our efforts to direct the affairs of government are in the best interest of our citizens, and our collective goals are guided by your infinite wisdom and peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I know this is two meetings in a row. This is not going to become a habit, certainly not for me. The mayor is a bit under the weather for the afternoon and evening, so we'll just move forward with that. Madam City Manager?
We don't have any agenda mods this evening, but we do have an announcement. And I would like to ask some visitors that we have with us to please stand and be acknowledged. As you know, Tallahassee was again selected to participate in the prestigious International Exchange Program, the Professional Fellows Program through the International City-County Management Association and the U.S. Department of State. We're pleased to have two ICMA professional fellows from Indonesia who are visiting with us, and they're joining us today at our meeting. They have been here for a little while now, about 10 days or so, and they'll be here for three weeks. And I am going to try to pronounce their names without doing too badly here, but please join me in welcoming Ms. Margarita Dos Santos. And Ms. Afia Rosdiana. Is that close? Welcome. Would you like to have a few words? No. All right. Thank you very much for being here.
We're glad that you are here and enjoying our wonderful city. And I think we're, I think individually, would like to hear your comments about our city at some point, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, could I pull item 9.01 from consent?
Certainly.
We are on citizen input on agenda items, item number eight.
We do have citizen input on item 1305, Erwin Jackson. And I believe that's the only speaker we have for this portion of the meeting. 1305 is the Edison Restaurant Development Update.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341, Jackson Bluff. As you know, I am opposed and have been opposed to the city taxing its citizens so it can help another citizen build and operate a bar for his personal benefit. This action is wrong for many reasons. Establishing bars for its residents is not the role of city government. Two, the city's actions unfairly compete with other local business owners. Is the city going to finance the remodeling and expansion plans for every bar and restaurant in Tallahassee? I certainly hope not. The public demands that all citizens be treated fairly and equally. It is a perception of the public that this particular contract continues to be sweetened because the business partner is a longtime friend and campaign manager, treasurer, of Mayor-elect Gillum. We are finally reaching the end of the Marx administration, and I had hoped the end of spatial deals and self-serving actions from our elected officials. A review of the history agenda, item 1305, states that after the business partner was selected, after he was selected, the city staff then approved his financial capability. How could the city staff come to this conclusion when the business partner is currently being sued by a previous business partner for $650,000? That doesn't sound like financial capacity to me. It is my understanding that the financial problems faced by the city's proposed business partner was unknown by the city until reading an article in the Tallahassee Report's newspaper. Well, thanks to Steve Stewart. It should not come to anyone's surprise then that now this business partner has repeatedly failed to meet the timetable for committing the $101.5 million to this project. The city is trying to enter into a project that is far outside the scope of local government, and they've selected a business partner who has defaulted on his current financial obligations to the city and is being currently sued by his past business partner. How many red flags do we need? Andrew, please. Commissioners, please. It is past time to kill this bad idea. The Edison Building should be used for a community purpose that will serve all residents. Now, who is going to show the leadership we need to get this heading in a different direction? Thank you very much.
There are no other speakers?
Thank you, sir.
We're on consent, and Commissioner Maddox has asked that we remove for discussion item 9.01.
Move consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 9.01, I guess we'll go back to you.
Could I make a comment on that? I didn't want to pull the item, but I did want to make sure that people understand that one of the things that we did was approve the extension of the Centerville sidewalk. And so the Centerville Road sidewalk will begin to move forward all the way down to its end.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's great. On item 9.01, Mr. Mayor Portem, I just wanted to pull it to say that I'm encouraged by our utility continuing to look outside of traditional sources. We are the Sunshine State in Florida, and we need to do as much solar as possible. And I like the direction that this agenda item is heading and hope we can continue to do more in the future. With that, I'll move the item.
Second.
And just to follow up to your comments, Commissioner, this particular situation required some careful thought on the part of our staff to make some changes that were in place, and I want to thank them because it was another, in my opinion, great example of our city utility, finding that there was an opportunity to improve on something. And I think we've done it in that case, and I think all involved recognize that. So having said that, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
We move to item 13.01, adoption of the Wayfinding Signage System. And Commissioners, based on direction received at the Long Range Target Issue Committee, planning staff has developed a new Wayfinding Signage System. The proposed system includes signs for the greater downtown area and placemaking districts like Midtown and the Market District. The system is designed to provide a consistent look while providing flexibility to allow for future expansion and to differentiate unique districts. We're seeking commission adoption of the Wayfinding Signage System, authorization for staff to move forward with implementation as funding is available, and approval to use public-private partnerships as a mechanism to help fund implementation. I think that Cherie is going to make a presentation, but I wondered if either of the target issue commissioners would like to make a comment on this before we go forward.
Move the item.
Second.
Wow, you've heard it, right? You know every detail.
Typically, when you hear items move that quickly, there's no reason for discussion or presentation, so I will say all in favor, please, up.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to stop the train here.
Commissioner Miller, I was trying to avoid eye contact, but you just did that. So I imagine we're going to have a presentation.
I knew she wanted to hear it.
I want everybody.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an item that we are excited about. You can actually, we've put a prototype on Clement Plaza, and you've actually seen a few of them in Cascades Park already, but there is a, those were put in, one to test and to get the public reaction, and then in Cascades Park, of course, to coincide with the opening. But there's a much, there's a larger plan to that, to address the bigger area and really show some cohesion for all of the sense-of-place areas as you come into town. So what I'm going to do is hand it actually, hand it over to the project manager, Brian Weebler, and Dan Donovan had both worked on this. So Brian's actually been really, both of them have gotten into the details, so I'm going to let him give you a more detailed presentation, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions if you have him at that point.
Thank you, Cherie, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Weebler with your planning department, introducing the Wayfinding Signage System. I do want to recognize Dan Donovan and Frank Dietrich, who did the design work for the system. As the city manager mentioned, this was done at the direction of the Long Range Target Issue Committee. This was also supported by the Downtown Tallahassee Reconnaissance and Strategic Assessment that was done by Live, Work, Learn, Play in 2013, identified the Wayfinding System as an immediate priority initiative. Purpose of the system is to be a catalytic project. We want to get things going in these placemaking districts in downtown, provide a navigational tool for visitors, and this provides a greater framework for consistent messaging and appearance for our signage system. And now I'd like to introduce the family of signs. The first one is the pedestrian pointer and the pedestrian kiosk. You've seen these at the Smoky Hollow Commemoration Site in Cascades Park. There's also another one near the restroom facilities. The district marker, this is used to help define the edges of our placemaking districts. The Shared Youth Path sign will be used for the bike route system. Here it is in use at the newly installed Bike Corral on Adams and College Avenue. The Wayfinding System also includes vehicular directional signs, and you've seen this in use on Franklin Boulevard and Pensacola Street. We also have signs to help folks find parking, parking trailblazers to get you going in the direction of public parking, and then identifiers at the locations. And gateway entrance signs, which are to go on gateway roads coming into our community. Here is the list of districts that we have Wayfinding Signs currently planned for. And we have four placemaking districts that have fully funded the Wayfinding System from previous allocations by the commission, Midtown Market District, South Monroe Adams, and the Huntington District for Leon County. We have partial funding for Downtown and South Side, a shortfall of around $250,000. This includes signs for Downtown, French Town, Gaines Street, Myers Park, and All Saints District. We have been working to take bites at those. Cherie mentioned the four signs installed at Cascades Park funded by Blue Plin 2000. We have nine signs that will be going up on the FAMU Way Extension funded through that project. We have four signs that can be funded through the South Monroe Adams Corridor placemaking allocation. The DIA has pledged $10,000 for signs in their district, and we have funding from the Clement Plaza Master Plan Implementation Funds for the signs on Clement Plaza. We're going to continue to partner and work with the CRA for potential funding in those districts. And also, the 2015 Catalyst Class from KCCI has selected Wayfinding and fostering implementation of Wayfinding as their project for the coming year, and so there may be sponsorship opportunities. Gateway signs, we have identified 11 different roadways, four gateway signs into the community. These are large signs, and you can see in the example there, provide opportunities to kind of bring some of the signage together on one, on one sign. Those are estimated about $10,000 apiece, and those are currently not funded. The bike route sign system is not funded. We do have an adopted bike route system, and that is identified in the penny sales tax extension for funding, and that would be a source for the Wayfinding Signs for those. However, we have gone forward and continued to look at opportunities on how we can use this, and in your agenda item, we included an example of that with the St. Mark's Trail Connection. You can see the Upper St. Mark's Trail coming into the stadium area on Office Use Campus, and then the end of the traditional St. Mark's Trail to the south, and the two don't meet. And so we've developed a pathway with Wayfinding Signage to make that connection, and a unique pedestrian kiosk with a railroad theme there as another opportunity for a project demonstrating how we can use these Wayfinding Signs to make connections. And lastly, the staff recommendation is to adopt the system and authorize staff to move forward with implementation as funding is available, and then to approve the use of public-private partnerships as a mechanism to help with that funding. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Well, there are a couple. First of all, and you've heard both of these, so you can expand on them, but I wanted to share them with you. First of all, there are two different fonts. I mean, this sounds like micromanaging, but honestly, if we can't see the things, then that's going to be a big issue. The font that's in the general everywhere vicinity is different from the one at the St. Mark's Trail, and the one at the St. Mark's is easier to see. So if you could think about that, I just wanted to bring it up. And also the size. I mean, make the things as large as you can with the space that you have, because the whole point is that people see these, so made that point. The other one is that J.R. Harding, with the disability advocacy folks, has brought forward a different logo, which is a little bit more, which is very more, much more dynamic. Now, in discussions with staff, this is not an approved image by the United Nations, I think, has the ultimate authority to approve this. But it's, it is used in other parts of the country. So I think that our staff is going to continue to investigate this, as is J.R. And if, the whole idea, he presented this as a no-cost option to me when he brought it up, no-cost meaning that we just go ahead and change them as we change signage going into the future, no special go-out-and-change-every-handicap sign on the whole city. But, so, just wanted to share that point with y'all, too. It's an image thing. It's much, they feel that this is much more dynamic, less dependent, and, you know, I respect their feelings on that.
Mayor-elect Gillum?
Yeah, just want to acknowledge and compliment Commissioner Nancy Wayfinding Miller for, you know, really riding this horse all the way into the ground. You've mentioned this a long time ago, and you've been consistent in bringing this up. Want to acknowledge the DIA and the work that they did and the study that you all produced. I mean, I think this is really important to helping people realize that there's a lot more to do in this city than what meets the eye, or maybe not. It certainly allows the eye to meet what is happening in this city. I don't think we can overstate the power of this imagery and what it might do to help people know that downtown and throughout areas of this city that there's a lot going on. If you were a visitor, you probably wouldn't know how to navigate a lot of the activities that take place in this, in this community. I think this will go a long way to doing that, so kudos, Commissioner Wayfinder.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillum.
I have a question that we posed, I know, over the past couple of years. With the increase, clearly, people's ability to utilize their smartphones, are we going to incorporate QR codes on any of these posts so that people can, you know, access our website for more information?
You bet. The pedestrian pointers and the pedestrian kiosks are key elements that have maps on them. And, for example, for the downtown area, we've developed the map to go on one side, but the other side, we still have some opportunities to do different cultural tourism, information on things that are going on in the area, public art, and that is a place. In your agenda item, there's a mention of the Capital Pathways Project, and that's kind of the next extension of the Wayfinding and looking at the different pathways that people take through the community, what improvements should we do along there. And that's where we'd be looking to do things like QR codes for a walking tour, for example. You could have access to it by hitting a QR code.
It seems to me also, just from the funding standpoint, if we could utilize QR codes, drive them to a site, even if it's not our site, that might be a sponsor's, for example, if there was a musical opportunity in Clement Plaza or something happening at Cascades Park, whoever the promoter was might want to advertise, knowing that whoever punches the QR code is going to be coming up with their information. So please consider that. Clearly, it's something that people are using now, and I think it's just going to become more prevalent in our community.
Agreed.
Having said that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Hooray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is 13.02, a discussion and approval of the 2015 Audit Work Plan, and that will be discussed by T. Bert Fletcher, our city auditor.
Mayor Portem and Commissioners, not even to pretend that an annual audit plan is as interesting as Wayfinding Signs, but to us, it is important.
Of course it is.
In accordance with City Commission Policy 104, we're presenting our proposed 2015 Annual Audit Plan for your approval. This plan, as in prior years, was developed using a professional risk-based approach that involved an evaluation of all the auditable topics and areas in the city, using criteria such as fiscal impact, the strength, or excuse me, the experience of management, public sensitivity, threat to public health, safety, and welfare, risk of loss, noncompliance, or fraud. As part of this process, we solicited input from various groups, including citizen groups such as neighborhood associations, various city officials, the management and leadership team of the city. Several potential audit topics were identified and considered as part of this process. Our proposed plan includes a combination of several projects that we're bringing forward from the prior year that are currently in progress or did not get started because of other projects that we did, special projects, new audits, projects for this year, and then, of course, our follow-ups on prior issued audits to address management success and resolving the issues that were identified through those audits. Our goal this year, to complete 25 audit reports, or complete and issue 25 audit reports, which is comparable to what we've done in prior years, and is provided by the city charter, this plan has been discussed in detail with, reviewed, vetted, and approved by the city's Citizen Audit Committee. And our recommendation is for your approval.
Move approval. Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Bert. I guess we have some extra time now.
The next item is 13.03, Approval of Pilot Electric Reliability Enhancement Program. And Commissioners, this item deals with the proposed pilot program to enhance reliability within our electric system. While the city has an electric service reliability within the electric system, we've heard from some of our customers, and you have two, who have shared concerns about areas that experience outages more frequently than others. The majority of the outages on the electric system are related to squirrels and tree limbs. Primarily squirrels, however. What we're proposing this evening is to offer a pilot program in three areas of the city to do enhanced tree trimming in those areas to aid in the improvement in reliability and to use the information that we get to determine how to move forward in the future in areas that may have particular problems. Rob McGara is here to describe the proposed project.
Commissioners, just real quickly, we wanted to walk through what we're proposing here. We're talking about the reliability of our distribution system, which is the wires that go from the substations to the individual customer. We have about 2,870 miles of that. One thing a lot of folks don't recognize is, a lot of that's already underground. We only have about 1,150 miles of it above ground, and that's the area where we see some of the challenges. We do monitor our reliability of the distribution system using some standard industry metrics, and these are listed on the slide here. There's not a standard that says you should target X in each of these, but it's a way for us to look at our performance year over to year and also to compare our performance with our peers, to see if we're, we're out of line. This slide gives you a feel for where we fall. The two red bars, one of them is a nine-years' average of the investor-owned utilities in Florida, is reported to the Public Service Commission. The sort of slashed red bar is the same data for the municipals that are over 50,000 customers, the larger municipals. Florida, is reported to the Public Service Commission. The sort of slashed red bar is the same data for the municipals that are over 50,000 customers, the larger municipals, and then the two yellow bars represent our performance for fiscal years 13 and 14. So you can see that we have good reliability overall from a system perspective, but we do have some circuits, some areas of the city, that we have more outages on that we would like. One of the other things we do track is what causes the outages, and this is data for fiscal year 13. Rank ordered there with tree, tree-related, gives us the most outages, followed by animals, and our animal problem is primarily squirrels. If you add those two together, 51.4% of our outages are trees and animals, and those two are related, as I'll talk about here in a second. Our next highest number is human, and we got some pictures here, if they'll come up, of...
Excuse me, a squirrel did that?
Well, the top right picture...
Try to get him not to drive.
Top right picture is one of our human opportunities, one of the probably more unique ones. He drove up a guy wire on a pole, and the truck got stuck there. Predominantly, the things we see are people hitting poles, knocking poles down. The bottom picture on the right is tree damage following a storm, where it's pulled down, a tree has come down and taken out a couple of our poles that we had to change. And then the picture on the left, I promise you, is not a photoshopped picture. That is truly what one of our service truck staff members found when they arrived to deal with an outage, where a squirrel contacted between the wire and the pole and caused an outage. Normally, we don't find the squirrels there, we find them on the ground, but that was sort of a unique one that we, we took a picture of and, if kept, to demonstrate our challenge there.
So for the record, is the squirrel alive?
No.
I wondered, too.
No, no.
He's holding on.
Just holding on.
You sure?
The, you know, we have to have a clearance between the lines and the trees. Otherwise, the trees become like an electric wire, and the, and the power goes to ground and causes a fault. Obviously, the greater distance the trees are from the lines, the less probability they're going to contact the lines or have a limb fall on the lines. So that means line outages. The tree distance also is a function of how much animal challenge we have, because the squirrels use the trees to get on the lines. So the closer the trees are to the lines, the easier it is for the squirrels to get on the lines. And as long as they're just running down the line, they're fine. It's when they get to a pole and touch between the line and the pole that closes the path. We currently have a tree trimming policy that calls for us to trim four to six feet around the wires, the conductors. We do that every 18 months. Every circuit in the city, all 1,150 miles, is touched over an 18-month period to trim. We implemented this policy back in 97, following some community discussion about concerns on a more aggressive tree trimming program. I will tell you, most of our peers trim 10 to 12 feet back from the wires. So, but they do it on a 36-month schedule, so we trim half as much twice as often. Here's a couple examples of trimming. It's hard to see in this picture, but you see the opening just past the pole there. There's a round opening in the trees right here, which is where our lines are running Here's another example out in the Klarren Bridle Trail, where the site clearance is good, but if you notice, you've got trees going over the top of the wires. It's that foliage on top of the wire that causes a lot of our problem with tree limbs, because they'll break, they'll die, they'll fall, and they'll come down and hit the wire and go across two of the wires and cause an outage. As the manager mentioned, we've been requested, or we've had customers call us about, and talk to us about some of these areas where we've had higher outage incidents, and what we're proposing tonight is a pilot program to where we would go to the three areas that we've selected, and they were selected based on the reliability trends we see in the customer contact and input, and work with those communities on developing an agreement to move forward with this tree trimming, enhanced tree trimming. We're not talking about forcing it on them. We would hope to work with the communities and make sure they're okay and the stakeholders. I showed you that picture a second ago with the Bridle Trail. This is what would be the preferred type of trimming, where we've cleared, and this is actually a section of the Bridle Trail that we're able to do this trimming on, because there's no tree limbs over the wire, but this is what we would like to see these areas to look like. So we're not talking about going way back, but we are talking about getting closer to the 10 to 12 feet and trying to clear the limbs from over the top of the, the lines. The three pilot areas we identified are the Klarren Estates, the Bridle Trail, the area of Klarren where the wires go through the Bridle Trails, Orange Avenue, a circuit that runs down Orange Avenue and feeds Bethel AME and the surrounding community, and then a circuit that's just east of TMH that serves down Mika Sookie out to the Capital Circle that we've seen some higher incidents on. If y'all approve the pilot, we'll then work to put together communications plan, meet with the affected neighborhoods and customers and stakeholders, and then if there's concurrence with moving forward in those areas, we'll get with our contract crews and start moving forward with the trimming. We will have to work with city and county growth management, because we have a general tree permit that we'll have to modify. It's written around our current tree trimming program, but we'll work with them to do the needed amendments there. Are there any questions?
Commissioners?
Second.
Commissioner Miller?
Well, I just wanted to clarify some things, I think is really what I'm going to do. First of all, I'd like for you to take a ride out to Veldedary Road and drive all the way up to Bradford Road and Bradfordville Road, and that is not the effect we're trying to achieve, I hope.
I'd have to go look at it, though. You're probably talking about some Tauckan or Duke Energy Lines.
That's right. It's a Tauckan project, but they have just basically sheared all the branches off of the trees on one side, and the effect is just not a good one. So I don't think that that's going to go over very well with the public. You've said, in Klarren, are you planning on doing all the Bridle Trails or just the areas where you have the most outages?
Well, it would really be the entire length of the Bridle Trail where those two circuits go. We would look to do the enhanced trimming along the entire length of that Bridle Trail.
All right, and then the last, well, two more things. First of all, Mika Sookie Road, you're talking about Mika Sookie Road, which, even though it's not a canopy in the area you're talking about, it's sensitive, so I don't want the Veldedary effect to happen there either.
And I should have said that. I don't think we see this venturing into a canopy road situation under the canopy road rules, so it would be a non-canopy road area. We'll have to work around that.
And then finally, you said 10 to 12 feet away from the wire, and I hope that you mean between 10 and 12, or 12 or less. Clearly, no more than 12, because, as you mentioned, this all came about, and I remember this, it all came about because there were some serious tree trimming that went on, and people all over town were really upset about it, so we've got what we've got now. Now, I'm respectful of the fact that you've tried this for 15 years, and you feel like you need to do some things differently, but just word of warning, that that public is still out there, so you don't want to offend everybody. And believe me, I've heard plenty of comments about the Veldedary situation, so...
Yes, ma'am. I'm assuming we're going to track this and make a determination to its effectiveness as to our outages, so that we can make some decisions in the future as to whether we continue or not?
Yes, sir. We track all of the outages like this and routinely watch it, so we'll track the data and be able to look at a before and after and see what sort of changes we've seen in outage patterns. And this isn't going to eliminate all outages, but it should reduce the frequency of those tree and squirrel outages that we've got.
Okay.
Are you going to be able to do anything about those trucks driving up to the guy wires? Sounds pretty interesting.
Probably not.
Is there a motion?
So, Chris.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The next item is 13.04, Tallahassee Mall Update. And commissioners, in 2012, our Design Works staff was asked to highlight key features that the community would like to see in a redeveloped Tallahassee mall. In June of 2014, the property was purchased by Tallahassee Retail Venture LLC. Since that time, a site plan for the first phase of redevelopment was conditionally approved, and demolition of a portion of the mall is actually beginning soon. Has it begun yet? Has it already started?
I believe they've started.
Okay. Today's staff will review the elements included in the first phase, the key elements of the 2012 concept, and how the overall redevelopment fits into the larger planning context of this area, and several related sales tax projects. And Cherie is going to, I think some of you have seen the Design Works design, basically, through either a target issue or something that we've done in the past, but I wanted to make sure that the commission knew what was going on, especially because demolition is going to be starting soon on that project.
Absolutely. As you see before you, this is some existing conditions that, it was just a study, a conceptual study, that the planning department, the Design Works team had done. One of our functions is highlighting some of those key areas and resources in the city and the county that have so much potential. So, as you know, we have staff who can help visualize what those, those could be, where it might be difficult to imagine that without some, some visual assistance. So what we have here, and I'll get to that in just a moment, but just initially, what I want to do is, is give you a brief outline of what the first, the conditionally approved site plan is, has, as far as its elements. I showed you, I'm going to toggle back and forth, the existing mall footprint with North Monroe Street running here, and John Knox here, and Allen Road here. So the footprint, of course, is a singular structure. The, the conditionally approved site plan calls for the demolition of a central portion that is in your agenda item at about 38% reduction in the building area, to add in an amphitheater, as well as, you can see some additional drives going through in this direction, and pedestrian facilities along those. And that's key, that the outlined portion is the, this first phase, and they'll be, the owner has expressed their intention to have additional phases in the future, but this is, this is what we are reviewing, or have reviewed in the past couple of months. I have a little bit of a blow-up of a closer view of, of, here, we can see the amphitheater itself. This is, the current drive coming in is, is right here off of John Knox, so you can see the addition of the roundabout and the breaking of the building into several pieces with an internal street and sidewalk system. And what I wanted to do is go back to that 2012 rendering, and first, preface that, that it was done hypothetical, conceptual rendering of just what could we, what could happen on a mall. At the time, there was not a buyer, and this was prior to interest of the current owner in the property a couple of years ago. So what staff did is research other malls, because there is a shift in the market from the large, you know, completely internal mall with, you know, air conditioning, everything internal. There is a market shift to have more of the similar types of retail uses, but more of a, a street-type feel, an urban-street-type feel. Sometimes they incorporate residential, sometimes they don't. So what we had imagined was actually a complete demolition and reconstruction of what it might look like, but of course, recognizing that that was a blank slate in actual terms as far as fiscal, fiscally possible scenarios, realized that it is also possible that they would redevelop using portions of the existing building, because that's what other similar malls have done, and that's actually what they're going to do. But there are some key elements from the concept that I want to highlight as far as, even with this first phase, that you can see start to emerge. One was the extension of Silver Slipper Lane across the street and through the Tallahassee Mall site, and then connecting with new drives to make some blocks. And as you can see, with that roundabout here and the street extension, you're starting to see that concept. Of course, it's going to look different from what we, we thought of, but the concept itself is still there, that piece is still involved. You have this street going closer towards the Monroe side, and then the Silver Slipper extending with some internal, some angled, some, I believe, parallel parking as well. You have the roundabout as well as an entrance feature. We had imagined parking on the exterior, where you would park and then walk to the interior where the shops, using the pedestrian facilities, which would likely be landscaped. You can see that concept. We showed an example of how that's done on Gaines Street with some of the recent developments. And using, creating parking lots, using the use, parking lots and garages, as well as liner stores. The site plan is using the existing parking on the outside, and then you can see the creation of those internal pedestrian pathways. We don't know, we don't have elevations of exactly what it would look like at ground level, but at least you see the fundamentals of how that original concept of creating the stores with a walkable scale is, is being put in place. We had also identified the benefits of a central square, which could be a gathering point, a possible place for events. And again, there is that space reserved in the, the site plan before you, which shows, it's, it's got those darker areas or parking areas, you have angled parking around that. It's in line with the amphitheater, the proposed amphitheater. And then finally, one of the other big elements, staff had imagined a use in there that would draw, an entertainment use that would draw people to the site at night. We're showing here a theater that's not uncommon. For example, Atlantic Station in, it's a big development in Atlanta, typically had something like that, but it's not a movie theater, but the amphitheater would have that similar type use of drawing people in from outside the immediate area for the entertainment At this point, I want to talk about a few things that, that would come in the future. There is the site plan, which, like I mentioned, was conditionally approved. Then in later phases, the, we're still going to be working with, and are working with the developers on a development agreement to deal with the future phases. And so there are a few things that were addressed in our concept that, since we had that concept in place, they serve as a great basis due through the development agreement process to go ahead and talk through those. So one of those is having some access and connections with the True Steal Center. It seems like there, if, there are some mutual benefits to be had as far as the road and pedestrian access, having some easier flow between the two. And then having a transit center onsite as well. There, there is a sales tax project, which calls for a, additional transit facilities throughout the city and the county, but one of the pieces is to have a superstop in the vicinity of John Knox and Monroe Street, because that's where several lines intersect, and it would be useful to have a more permanent structure in the area where those routes could stop. People could have a covered, a larger covered area and maybe a bathroom where they could use, they could wait for 10 or 15 minutes for a connecting line. So that, we don't have an exact place in mind, but it will be important to pick a location that the, the buses can maneuver quickly so that you don't increase the headways because of the need to get in and out of a complex, complex driveway situation. So again, a specific place has not been set, but we're, one of those things that we'll be talking about is where's the best place for both the site as well as the Star Metro to have that. One of the other key pieces is, there is the potential to have a greenway connection on the north of the site here. I've shown it outside of the yellow line, it would be, I just did that because it would be, it's easier to see that way, but that connection is actually quite an important one. The Lake Jackson South Trail, we'll be seeing in the next couple of years. The Lake Jackson South Trail, we'll be seeing in the next couple of months, an update to the Greenways Master Plan to include this trail. But it's an identified trail that has the potential to connect the Lake Jackson Mounds to Lake Ella. And this is an important piece. You see it highlighted here to help make that connection for both cyclists and pedestrians. I've heard of quite a few people say it's difficult to cycle downtown from anything north of the interstate, and so this is a potential off-road route that could get people into downtown, and to connect to both iconic and very important pieces of the recreation system. Finally, this site is along North Monroe, and another sales tax project is the North Monroe Gateway. And as we move forward, it will... As we work towards... In the future phases of development, currently, the development site plan is internal to the mall site. But when we get to future phases, which have a more direct impact on North Monroe, it'll be important to address the North Monroe Gateway. We just have a couple of rendering here of some of the types of improvements that would be... This is on a piece closer to the interstate, but it's a good example of what types of streetscaping, transit, bike facilities, landscaping could do to beautify the corridor and make it a attractive and appealing entrance into Tallahassee. So, of course, we'd want to work with the developer in the future for the... Because they have a pretty large frontage along the North Street, to have some consistency in the landscaping and the other facilities like that. And with that, this is really an informational item, but I'm here to answer any questions, and so is Karen, who has been working through growth management on the site plan approval process.
Commissioner Maddox.
Well, I'm excited about this project. I do want to make sure that we're making sure that the amphitheater sound is not going to affect the neighborhood to the north. I see it's oriented to the south, but let's take due care there, not to repeat some of the problems we've had with Cascades.
And I'll just repeat something that was stated in the agenda item. One of the conditions of approval of the site plan was to deal with some of the mitigation of that sound issues, if there are any.
Commissioner Miller.
On that particular point, could you go back to the map for a minute that has their development on it?
Yes.
All right. The hashed areas, are those going to be demolished, or do they stay? And the reason for my question is that, when I was looking at the map on the agenda item, I don't know if this amphitheater is enclosed on two sides or not. I mean, bordered by buildings on two sides.
Those buildings, at this point, are projected to stay.
So, that helps, at least with the noise thing. So, the building in the front, everywhere I see hashed is going to be there in the end, at least for now, right?
Yes, yes. That those buildings are intended to stay at this point, and they have expressed that they've done these amphitheaters in the past, and that the buildings did help in other situations, and that was part of the design.
Okay, good. Great, thanks.
And the black there is the pavement, that's road.
Correct.
Anticipate road.
Pavement, and that includes the parking areas as well. So, when you see some wider sections, that's typically one or two bays of parking.
Well, Mayor Protem, I think this is a really good project to see go forward, especially considering that I think this community can ill afford to see North Monroe fail as a gateway to this community. And so, I think this is a really creative repurposing of the space. I want to echo the concerns of my colleagues with regard to the sound tests. I would hate to see this outdoor venue constrained in the same way that I think we're facing some of the constraints at Cascades Park. I have to take some comfort in the fact that they've done this other places, and have been successful in other communities, so have full faith that they'll be able to work it out. But from a timeline standpoint, can you just help us understand what timeline we're moving on on these items?
They've stated an intention to have this first phase complete by late spring of next year of 2015.
And the first phase is what we're looking at?
It's what you're looking at here, correct?
Got it.
And if I could, I'm assuming this is mixed use. This is residential, it's retail, it's entertainment, it's food, it's a variety of shopping and entertainment options.
At this point, some of the uses, we don't know, and that was actually one of the conditions that was mentioned in the conditional approvals, to get some more clarity on some of the more of those uses. I can't tell you exactly if residential... I don't believe residential's included in this phase, but in some of the initial concepts, there was some discussion of that.
Okay. All right. Information item only, any other comments? Commissioner Miller?
I wanted to follow up on two things you brought up. Number one, the superstop, and number two, on TruStell. Have you discussed those two? I know you talked to them about TruStell. Have you talked to them about the superstop, too?
Star Metro has, and it's also come up. As we go into the details of the development agreement, we'll continue to refine that.
All right. So, we could conceivably locate our superstop here. That would certainly be a nice public-private partnership. And that connection with TruStell, this particular pond is absolutely beautiful. I mean, we used to... We actually featured this pond more than once on our TAP calendar, as just an example of what a stormwater pond could look like. And if you go out there this time of year, right about, well, now and a month from now, it's surrounded by deciduous trees with color, and it really looks like fall. So, really pretty area, and having been over to TruStell with gymnastics classes and everything waiting around for an hour, I know that they have a little bit of an area back there where you can go out and walk, but it doesn't connect to the mall. So, people could literally run over there and do some shopping instead of just sitting there in TruStell while their child's at class. So, I was really happy to hear that. So, they're in on that, too, right?
Again, the details would have to be worked out, because they're not included in this phase, but they do recognize the value of the beauty of that pond, and so have talked about ways to incorporate it and capitalize on it for both areas.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherie. And I want to thank our staff. I know that this is a substantial project, and for our staff to be able to work with the developer and hopefully solving some of those issues, I want to thank you all for your hard work.
Well, thank you. And of course, growth management and public works, everyone, parks and recreation, everyone's been involved from the very start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Do we vote?
Nope, this is just information.
Oh, it's informational, thank you.
The next item is 13.05 Edison Restaurant Development Update. And Commissioners, this item is a brief update on the Cascades Park electric building redevelopment. As you're aware, staff has been working with the State Bureau of Historic Preservation to address comments which were submitted during permitting and plans review. The state recently approved design changes in response to their comments, including the use of architectural aluminum windows. The design changes are also scheduled to be reviewed by the ARB on November 5th. Is that the right date, November 5th? Concurrently, the developer is seeking revised bids and would like to start construction after approval by the ARB. The city still needs to review the final construction bids and the final financial information before funding the project. Mark Bedouin is here to answer any questions that you might have on this item.
I have a couple of quick questions. Let's just... Because time has passed, and originally, this, we talked September, and clearly, it's not opening in September. If things go well on 11/5, do we have an idea of when this might open? I know a lot of people ask me when it's going to open.
Yes, we really want to get this thing open in the spring. If it goes past March, then it kind of puts us in a position of opening kind of towards the summer, which they dearly don't want to do, and that may push that back to the fall. So, we're doing everything we can to expedite that. The issue with the state recalls you to revise the plans.
Right.
You've got to go back to growth management, which as soon as the ARB approves the plans as well, we would hope that the permits would follow shortly thereafter. We can complete everything and move forward with construction, starting in November, looking at 120 to 150 days.
Okay. And do we have any idea yet what kind of restaurant this is going to be? Have they indicated to us what it's going to be?
Yes, and they've been through some significant visioning with the neighborhood and with some consultants on what kind of restaurant they want. It has evolved into something that they think would fit better into the community, and will continue to have those discussions with the Myers Park neighborhood to determine, you know... To answer your question, they're talking about a family restaurant that would serve, you know, have the brew element, but also be a family restaurant that would serve visitors to the park.
Because the visuals that were sent to us, I don't know, probably three or four months ago, had a significant amount of outdoor space being utilized.
Yes, sir.
And I know clearly, we had some issues on a much louder level, having to do with sound coming from the amphitheater. Are we in the neighborhood satisfied with what we're doing as far as restrictions on the sound coming from those?
Yes, and there are provisions in our lease agreement that give us the look-back provision to go back and address issues if they are not what we think they're going to be. But they're actually going to do some things with the neighborhood, put an acoustical guitar out there, play it, see if you can hear it over there on Ms. O'Connor's house. So, yes, they're working with that. She's the closest one.
Jeannie has made it where she's not even here, and she's mentioned. That's impressive. And the last thing, and I think, Madam City Manager, you addressed it, I'm assuming we don't start construction until we have all the financial from them in place guaranteed, we're ready to go.
Yes.
We're not going to spend a dollar until they do.
Okay. Commissioner Gillum?
Yeah, just a quick question on that, because I want to make sure that what we are doing and the way in which we're supporting is clear. The building is a taxpayer asset. My assumption is the windows that are going in are part of that taxpayer asset, that regardless of who the occupant of the building is, what eventual use will be made of the facility, that because we're the owners, because we want to ensure the integrity of the building, and, again, while I love the concept and want this restaurant to work out, and if there's a brew pub, you know, all the better, whatever brings activity into the park and people to the park. But if that idea doesn't work, and I don't have any reason to believe it wouldn't, but if it weren't to work, it's my belief that we would still be trying to find an occupant to the building, we would still need to put in windows, we would still need to stabilize it and make it ready for an eventual tenant.
We've got a permissible building that we could immediately re-RFP that if something were to occur.
I say that to say that I think we should be very careful around how we are connecting the two. So, what you all are doing, from a real estate standpoint, to make this facility leasable, or to make this... To negotiate the lease agreements and the lease terms and the financials that are associated with that, I'm sure there's appropriate due diligence that you're doing. But the part that we ought to be concerned about, and that I'm concerned about as a member of the Commission, is making sure that we get the windows in the building and that building looking presentable, so that it doesn't look like a constant state of a construction zone, which is what it looks like right now. So, I'm wondering, you know, how we view that, you know, and what context do you put this? I understand the sensitivity of it, and you're in the middle of negotiating the lease arrangements, but our money and our investment in the windows and making that building ready for rent is our obligation, period, full stop.
We concur, and I think I understand what you're saying, is what if something happened? How would we get the windows in the building and make it leasable? We could take those plans, we could do it ourselves up to a certain point, and then put out an RFP.
Got it. So, I'll just say again, for the manager's purposes, I mean, it is... I am interested in the building getting into a condition. It is a taxpayer asset. I think it is right that we are determining what eventually goes in there. Taxpayer money has gone in over $20 million into that park. It would be a shame if we just said, "Anycomer, take it." I think we would do the same exercise we did here, which was put an RFP on the street, ask for a developer to meet the terms of what we wanted to see, and what we wanted to see at the time was a restaurant, venue, and something that brought people into the park. This is what was decided by the Commission and suggested to us by the committee that reviewed it. You know, let's work that piece out, but my... Our commitment ought to be to that building, to that facility, to make sure that it's in a condition to be leased.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Commissioner Gillum. I completely agree with what you're saying, because, just to provide a little bit of a history, we began to discuss this in March of 2011, and per those discussions, the staff, the planning staff, went out and did an extensive study over the summer, and gave us a wonderful report in August on how these buildings have been repurposed in the rest of the country. Based on that, we made the decision that we wanted, A, should we sell it, B, should we... What should we do? We made the decision to keep the building, because we could control the use, and we also made the decision to renovate it. And we also made the decision to renovate back then, in August of 2011, before any one other individual was involved, to renovate it as a restaurant, at least, and maybe some other uses. We toured, I've been on a tour. I mean, Wayne Tedder explained that you could actually put 10,000 square feet in there. I mean, if you did the different floors, plenty of... I mean, it's basically a shell that's got a lot of possibility, and we felt that it was important, as part of Tallahassee's history, too, to keep the building. That was a long time ago. I have not changed my interest at all. If we had to vote tonight, I would do exactly the same thing. And my interest also is aligned with Commissioner Gillum, what Commissioner Gillum just expressed, and that is to get the building renovated for use. And I'm glad we've gotten settled about the windows. I know you all just got those reports back from the state, and that you have one more step on that. At some point there, though, the project needs to move, that renovation project, at least that renovation piece of it, needs to be accomplished. Now, tenant or no tenant, this tenant, some other tenant, don't care, but the renovation is real important to... Also, so it doesn't look like a construction site just forever. My... I have the impression, and I'm asking you, this is a question to be answered, that in this case, because this is the first tenant, the renovation project and the lease, et cetera, and the finishing out is all being done by a private entity that has answered the RFP. Is that right?
Correct. It's comparable to a joint venture, where we're putting in money and the developer's putting in money. They're going to do the renovations, we're going to oversee that. You know, obviously, the... How we disperse the money is going to be like a construction contract that we would manage, and then they would complete that, and then they would lease the building upon completion.
Well, is there a point in time where... I mean, we need for them to start at some point. So...
Yeah.
If they haven't started by the beginning of the year, I think we should have another conversation. That's basically...
Well, and again, if your understanding is the same as ours, and I think there was the majority of us who were there, I'm not sure why your answer to Commissioner's, the first question was, we wouldn't move forward with the windows until after whatever financials have been sorted out. My point is, is regardless of how that gets worked out, and I think that you all ought to do whatever due diligence is necessary to make that happen, we ought to move forward getting... I mean, whatever happens on that will not determine whether or not these windows go in, because it's important to the architectural and the historical integrity of the building.
If I understand you correctly, Commissioner, what you want is to be able to move forward in November, regardless of what we're doing as far as the tenant.
And when I say move forward, with regard to the renovations of the asset, the public asset that we have control over.
Understand.
And with regard to the lease agreement and whatever remaining terms you have out there for the tenant, you all have to do your due diligence to make that happen, make that work, but for the... It's the public's building, it's the public's money, those windows will eventually have to go in there, sooner than later. I'd love for that place to look less like a construction site, sooner than later.
Understood.
Have people going in and out. I mean, it's a public building.
So, my question is, are we talking only the windows? Or are part of the... We're talking $2.1 million between the CRA and the city, that we're going to invest in construction, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the windows are how much?
300, 200, 200,000 and some change.
So, 1.8 million is going to be utilized for something else, other than the windows?
Oh, yes.
And that 1.8 million that's going to be utilized in something other than the windows probably has something to do with what is going to be in there eventually, which in this case is a restaurant.
I think the issue is the windows are a component of overall renovation.
Right.
And, you know, it's not just put windows in and then come back and do construction later. You know, we've got a set of construction plans that include the windows, and it would be better to do that all comprehensively. I think all that's going to come together here in November, and we can move forward with the total renovation. But what I'm hearing is you want an option that would bring the building back into a weather-type facility if that doesn't move forward. building back into a weather-type facility if that doesn't move forward, and I understand...
Well, I still don't understand, since in this case, the vendor has been established for a very, very long period of time, and even today, we received an email that said that the vendor's financing was in place and ready to go. I'm not quite sure why we can't wait until we have that guarantee and their money is in the bank, because ours is clearly there, and we do this as you had expressed it is, using the term joint venture, why we wouldn't get this thing going immediately after November 5th, because I'm thinking by now, the vendor's got the money ready to go, we've got our money ready to go, if it's a partnership, let's do it together, and let's get this thing done and opened. And that, so my position is, and I may be different than the rest of the commission, let's get started, but let's do it the right way, which is if we are partners in this, let's both have our money at the table.
I agree. The construction bids will be ready at that time, too, so we'll know...
So we should be ready to go right then?
...be able to start construction as soon as they get that permit.
So if we were to say this by the end of November, which we have a commission meeting, I think Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we could have some kind of report at that point where we are in the money, and we could say, at that point, make a decision whether we want to move on without it, or great, the money's in the bank. Could we agree on that?
That's fine.
Glad to.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Next item.
That was for information only. Famu Way update, and Commissioners, as you know, Famu Way is to include two travel lanes with wide bike paths, on-street parking, landscaped sidewalks and medians. It's envisioned to incorporate a linear greenway along the path of the St. Augustine branch as part of Segment III of Blueprint's Capital Cascade Improvements. Construction of this project began February 2014, and it's been advancing well. Public Works is here to update the commission on the progress of constructing Famu Way extension to the Lake Bradford Road portion. This item is on the agenda for a couple of reasons. One, because I don't think we've had an update since they've really gotten started, and then, secondly, Commissioners, if we've raised some questions about, is it really going to take a couple of years to get this done? And I really would like for us to focus on the chronology and the funding that we have in place for Famu Way.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, point officials. Famu Way, what is to be the most beautiful roadway in Tallahassee, and that is our theme, our guiding theme on this. As the manager said, the purpose is to give you an update on the design and construction activity associated with that. Famu Way, as you know, would run, will, currently runs to Wanish Way from Monroe, and then from Wanish Way, the extension would take it all the way out to Lake Bradford on this following alignment. It is broken up into several phases, with Phase 1A being that section from Martin Luther King to Wanish Way, that is the phase that is currently under construction on that. This is also, I must say before I go any further, that this is a joint project, Famu Way for the roadway, and then Famu, and then the Cascades Trail is also adjacent to it. It is, it is going under one project and advancing in that manner. So Phase 1A would be, is that section from Martin Luther King to Wanish Way, with Phase 1B being that section from Wanish Way to Pinellas Street, which includes the roundabout and the back entrance, a new back entrance into Railroad Square. That would be followed by Phase 2, which would run from Gamble Street, or from Pinellas Street to Gamble Street, and then Phase 3, which would be from Gamble Street to Lake Bradford Road. And of course, there's, in the sales tax extension project, there is a Phase 4, which would be that segment from Martin Luther King over to Monroe. It would be a renovation of that existing section. Quickly, Phase 1 is broken up, as I said, into two phases, Phase 1A, and let me give you some progress reports there, that includes the stormwater pond at Van Buren, this is the Van Buren Pond, this is a five-acre pond, that is, this is the very pond that, once complete and operational, will help relieve the flooding up at Leon High School. Okay? The ditch is being covered, as we speak, in, along the section. You can see the double-barrel box culvert there, those are large double barrels that are going to run all the way down, down the existing ditch, they're working ahead of the box work, another view of the box, and then, of course, that was closing the ditch. The pond at Van Buren itself, that is a, like I said, a five-acre pond, those walls that you see there, those are 20-foot-high walls, okay? So there will be a lot of pedestrian activity above that, on top of those walls.
20 feet?
20 feet, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. There's a lot of water that that pond will be holding, a lot of water. Now, it will, you know, meter it out.
You'll have a fence around this, I hope.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In fact, in the original slide, the first slide, there was an amphitheater, not an amphitheater, a terrace seating area on one end of the pond, and that, there is no physical connection to the pond in terms of people being able to access the water level, so it'll be separated. It's just, it's just for aesthetic reasons. At Martin Luther King, we do have the roundabout construction underway, you can see them doing some of the pavement, that is, the crossing over into the houses on the north side of the ditch, so that portion is already in, this is the roundabout construction. The interior, the apron in that roundabout is, consists of multicolored pavers, while the roundabout itself is concrete pavement.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I see the buildings are elevated, and I'm assuming this was previously in the floodplain?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it still going to be in the floodplain, or will these people be released from the need to have flood insurance at this point? Because I don't know where the water would come from.
With the closed ditch, it's changed the floodplain considerably down here, I couldn't tell you exactly what portion, if any, portion of these buildings are in there at this point, but I can certainly get that information.
But we should get some relief from flood insurance requirements?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
There's some of the multicolored pavers you see around that apron in the roundabout. So, that construction time for Phase 1A is basically through April of 2015, we started in February of this year. Then we will follow that up with, in September of this year, we've started some construction of the box culvert. Beyond that, with, as part of Phase 2A, or, I'm sorry, 1B, and that would be this section here, from, we're looking at it from the west to the east, let me get the mouse. This part right here, this is the railroad crossing at Sterns, is in this area, Sterns, but this is the Eugenia Street, here's Railroad Square, here's Coal Shoe Park, so Wanish Way is up at the top of the screen here, and basically, the alignment will follow that. You can see, you can see the activity already starting in that area.
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry.
You have questions after every slide.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So it looks like you all are actively busy, even beyond the, even beyond Wanish Way.
Right, and that is because the box work has to go in first.
Advance.
So they're advanced ahead of us. You can see some of the clearing has already occurred here, and this is actually, this lower portion is actually part of Phase 2, and that phase, we've gotten approval to do some clearing before...
So we've got all our right-of-way, all that's taken care of?
We're still, we're finalizing some locations, but anywhere that we have not, we haven't started any construction.
And where's Pinellas on here?
Right there.
There. Okay, also, I wanted to ask you, over at, you referenced Coal Shoe Park, and at Railroad Square, in the back, the very left-hand side of the screen, there's a big fence, I mean, you can't get to the pond at this point, at least last time I was there. So what's the evolution of that?
As far as taking down the fence and allowing access on that end? That fence, as we understand it, that fence is part of Railroad Square's property, and it would be their fence if, as they...
So if they want to take it down, they have the option when we're finished?
True.
Okay, good.
Quick question, the segment up to Wanish Way, will that be opened? What's the, I assume there will be incremental openings of these as you complete them, is that right?
Yes, sir.
What's the timeline?
The completion dates that you saw in the timelines, let me see, I think I've got that summarized. Here you go. Those are the completion dates for those specific segments. So in April of 15, we should have that entire segment from...
August 2016? Or April?
Right, right, but we're opening at least in two subsegments. So from Martin Luther King to Wanish Way, that segment should be complete, all the bells and whistles by 2015.
Nice.
We're going to hold you to that?
Yeah. Nice.
You hit some more pictures of the ditch and some of the work that's going on, that's the removal of the last bridge that actually crossed the ditch, this was over in the Conklin area, and then some more ditch work. As far as Phase 2, we are 70% complete with that design. The issue with Phase 2, and the reason that it looks to start as late as it does, is primarily because we're very, very linked here with what we're doing with the box culvert. At this point, the box culvert is being brought to about this point right here, which, now Phase 2 again, starts here at Railroad, or excuse me, Pinellas, and runs all the way down to Gamble. There's a, there's a decision that has to come here in the near future from our blueprint friends, in that the, we have to take, we have to decide whether we go and follow the existing ditch and cross over the railroad and stay on the north side of the track, or whether we take the box and continue it following the south side, there are issues.
Is this at grade crossing, just to clarify?
This is actually below the railroad trestle. There's a railroad trestle right here, the ditch crosses under.
Got it.
So we either take the box and then open the ditch and keep the open ditch on that side, or we take the box and extend it on to the south, to, following the Famu Way alignment. If we follow the Famu Way alignment, obviously, that's going to be underground construction so that the roadway can be above it, but that decision has yet to be made. The consolidated, the consolidated stormwater model is currently being finalized, once that is finalized, that'll help dictate which way, and what the options are associated with which one of those. So that is a process that's currently very active. For what we're designing. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Of course.
Go ahead.
Okay, now, it sounds like to me that, I'm interested to find out exactly where the blueprint piece of that and where the city piece, and in a sense, I feel that what I'm hearing you described is something that's similar to Franklin Avenue, if it all stays on the east side of the railroad track, right?
If it stays on the east side, correct, that is correct.
So in that case, where would the blueprint piece be? Would they be paying for the culvert only?
Yes, ma'am.
If that is also the case, what other parkland can we get out of this? I mean, can we, can we actually use the trestle that exists under the railroad track to make a path under there that goes to Lake Alberta? I mean, incorporate some greens, because basically, what I'm seeing is that we're going to end up with no green space here, and I'm just looking at how, can you grab that? And where's my trailhead? You promised a trailhead.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Okay, good.
To answer the first part of your question, it depends on the results of the consolidated stormwater study, the consolidate. There is, with one option, there's a stealing basin that's in the area, there may, that may allow or may not, at this point, we don't know, may allow access and connection to Coal Shoe, as far as access, and then, of course, the other, the other side, the trail, the trail would follow, because just at the south end here, right here, at Gamble Street, that's where the St. Mark's Trail currently ties in, so it's very important for us to keep that connection going through there, in that area. And as far as the trailhead, we are looking at a piece of property in this area right here, that we may have a remnant piece due to our right-of-way needs that may allow us to provide a trailhead there. So we are working with Parks and Rec on that as well.
Now, somewhere in here, there was a piece of property that was acquired in the past by the Community's Trust way back when Craig Diamond was...
That's south of here.
Okay, all right.
That's beyond, beyond...
And honestly, I wanted you to see, Chuck Goodheart has actually arranged for the cyclists when we began to talk about a trailhead over on Lake Alberta and all that, they have, obviously, you can go from Lake Bradford Road around the pond, and then you can take that little path, you see that little trail, and he made that possible for cyclists to cross over and get on Sterns Street, and then come down and connect to the Parkway, so, you know, everybody's been trying to push this forward.
This connection, this connection right here is very important for different trails.
Okay.
Relax, just a second.
So that's Alberta Pond?
Yes, yes, sir. Coal Shoe, Coal Shoe Pond is actually up in this area.
Just, Mr. Mayor, pardon, just an editorial comment, we're looking for acquiring property to have a trailhead, yet we have property on the other side of Alberta that'd be perfect for a trailhead, and we sold it.
Yes, we did. We discussed it at the time.
Yeah. I have a bad idea, so I'm just putting that out there.
We better have a trailhead that is high-profile, easily to access, highly visible, well-marked, just like we would have had if we had put it on the other property.
Phase 3, this is currently, we're developing design concepts here. This illustration here shows where the existing, where Phase 2 would terminate here at Gamble with a roundabout. This is the existing Gamble Street extension out to Lake Bradford Road, and you can see it there. There are portions of that that are actually on CSX right-of-way, so if we use that as the alignment to provide, and quite honestly, to, let me show you the next, to show you the issue here, that is what it looks like today, and all the property that you see on the left-hand side of that road is CSX right-of-way. There are some huge challenges in terms of how to make this a, the most beautiful road in Tallahassee gateway, and so on, with the current alignment. So we are also looking at alternatives to that and see what we can do with those. Obviously, this area of the project is within the CRA, the French Town South Side CRA, so anything that we do here can help with that redevelopment potential.
So...
This option 2, this option 2 would basically create a new roadway from the intersection of Mill Street and Gamble, and basically come through the wastewater facility, the plant there. We've spoken with the sewer folks, and basically, that facility can be, is being decommissioned to the point where we can, we do have the opportunity to remove those tanks and tie in there. Now, one of the things that, we are going to bring this discussion to the long range, as we develop this, we'll be bringing it to long range for further evaluation, and then proceed from there, but there are obviously different costs associated with different options and so on.
Where's Tallahassee Junction? I mean, so that's other publicly-owned land, where's that exactly?
It's just, if you can see the mouse, it's just down, just south of this area right here.
Okay.
Okay, that right there is the St. Mark's Trail, so it's south of here. Commissioners, any other questions? Comments? I appreciate the presentation, my concern was, I was thinking in terms of, none of it was going to be open until a certain date, but clearly, you have it phased, that's good. My only comment, following the others, is if we're going to be covering that ditch, I think we probably ought to cover it all the way. It's a public safety issue, the sooner we get that thing covered, the sooner we move the water underground and protect our citizens, I think the better off we are. I think this is going to be a fabulous roadway, and Commissioner Miller has one more comment, and then we'll...
Well, my comment is that if anyone would like to know how much water these things hold, go down there sometime when we're having a good, heavy rainstorm. I mean, it doesn't even have to be a five-inch rain, but if you go down there, you will be horrified. I mean, I, well, many people will be excited.
Stand back.
Kayakers would be just all about it, because it looks like Colorado or somewhere else where they have a lot of water. It really flies through there, and, I mean, I was, I was pretty shocked that it was open and that people could actually fall into it and get churned up and spit out, you know, way downstream, so that brings me to another point that I wanted to mention, I hope that in the end, we don't want any people in this system at all, in any way, and so wherever there are outlets, like I expect you to, like at the Leon High School, cover it up like that one over at FSU, where those, I mean, that thing is an impenetrable barrier, nobody could get in there now, but that's going to be a real big thing, I guess, given the fact that so much water flows through there, nobody needs to be in there flowing through there, because it would not be, it would not work out well.
And if you recall, when we did the outreach for the various, in advance of this project, we had, I remember the very first meeting being down at the... we had, I remember the very first meeting being down at the community center where at Walker Ford, where it was a February day, Madam Manager, we had breakfast, and it was just ice cold. But since that day and at all the subsequent community meetings, closing that ditch was the number one issue.
Absolutely.
Okay, I can understand.
Thank you, Gabe. I think we're gonna--
Can I hit you with your budget, with the budget, real quick?
Real quick.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's it. With the budget.
I'm sure we'll come back to that at a future time.
We will, we will. Just wanted to let you know where we are.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, we're at the end of our city commission meeting. It is now 5:30. Do we have, just so that we could discuss it, go ahead and go with unagended speakers?
That'd be great, that and sharing of ideas.
Yep.
We do have unagended speakers--
And recognizing if anybody comes, well, no, this is our commission meeting, correct.
Right.
Okay.
Unagended speakers, the first is Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Harry Brown. And then there are a couple of other speakers as well.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. For several years, I spoke out against the city using red light cameras as a huge revenue source. Even though this commission continued to say it was a safety measure, the facts show it actually caused more accidents. Now we learned that a Florida District Court of Appeals judge has ruled, and I quote, "It is illegal for camera operators to issue citations to drivers," end quote. My only question now is where do the citizens of Tallahassee need to go to get back the money that was illegally taken from them by this commission? It is past time that this money grab against Tallahassee residents is terminated. We also learned this week that the FBI has arrested the former mayor of Charlotte, North Carolina, for taking money from city contractors and acting in other self-serving ways. This corrupt mayor is now serving four years in prison and was only fined $10,000. That was disappointing. It does seem that the FBI waits until a corrupt mayor leaves office and then he's arrested. The mayors of New Orleans, Detroit, Charlotte, and several cities in South Florida have all been arrested, charged, and found guilty of their corrupt and self-serving activities. I was going to ask John Marks if the FBI has contacted him yet. I'm disappointed he's not here, but I'm certain he will be hearing from them shortly after his retirement. Here is a legal analysis that I had put together with all background supporting documentation and laws showing that John Marks and several members of this commission, in fact, acted illegally when they took cash for themselves and called it deferred compensation. I want to make this part of the public record. The only reason this commission was not sued for their actions was because a private citizen does not have standing in court in this matter. The reason government officials were never charged was because they were protected by decisions by city attorney Lou Shelley and his inaction. The city of Tallahassee has hired a staff person to be an ethics educator. Unfortunately, she cannot act without the approval of the city attorney. This educator has no enforcement authority, can only work in areas approved by senior staff. The citizens of Tallahassee need an independent ethics officer with a prosecutorial background to fight corruption in City Hall. I strongly encourage every citizen to vote yes on November 4th for the city referendum establishing an independent ethics officer and anti-corruption policy for our entire community. And I appreciate having a chance to talk twice tonight.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown. He will be followed by Philip Parsons.
May I have help with the overhead, please?
Could somebody help Mr. Brown with the overhead projector?
Ms. Barbara, can you help me? Thank you. Not going to see it. Don't worry about it. I tried to put it on transparency. It's okay. He's good. We won't worry about that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Harry Brown. I reside at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee, Florida, 32309. I'm here to discuss the mistreatment of city employees. This is not just about Harry Brown. This is about other employees who are still being treated the way I was treated. I have a document here, Scott, that was read by you some years ago, said that Harry Brown was, for 14 years, was accused of sexual harassment and numerous other things. What stupid employer going to keep a man around sexually harassing employees for 14 years? Nobody's that stupid. So why would you even have Anita Favors and Sharon O'Fahone put together such stupid stuff as this? But I'll go ahead and read some of my performance evaluation comments. Harry gets along well with all other employees in the building. Harry is a very dependable employee. Harry takes personal interest in his job and performs an outstanding job. Mr. Brown is a very dependable employee and takes personal interest in all his responsibilities. Mr. Brown is an extremely resourceful and loyal employee and goes beyond the call of duty. Harry is a very excellent employee to have on the management team. He maximizes limited resources, pleasured to work with. Harry continues to be a great asset to the department, maximizes work output with limited resources, always proactive in completing and anticipating work assignments, goes beyond the call. He is called out at nights because of lack of night shift supervisor, excellent production given staff shortage, no prodding necessary, usually on top of issues before it arises. Harry is one of the hardest workers in the department. He extracts the most out of his employees, handles difficult situations with diplomacy, pleasure to work with, self-starter. Harry gets many favorable comments and letters. He shows managerial effectiveness. Additional responsibilities are handled well. City handled in highly professional manner. Harry makes great use of training provided. I won't go any further with that. But my attorney said the city manager and Sharon O'Fahone tried to make Harry look like a sexual predator. How do you do this to employees who come here to work for this community? They don't come here to schmooze, snooze, and booze with you. We come here to work, and that's what we do. We don't come here to work for the city manager. We come here to work with you, but we come to work with the community. That's what--
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next speaker.
I will continue.
Next speaker is Philip Parsons, followed by Joe West.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Parsons. I live at 2086 West Forest Drive in Tallahassee. The purpose for my requesting time to speak is that our neighborhood association, Glendale and others, have been involved in the evaluation of your proposed noise ordinance, which has been before you for some time, but hasn't been the subject of much activity in several months. We were encouraged by the proposed ordinance, the draft ordinance that was issued, and we think this problem of excessive noise and different functions in Tallahassee will continue. And your staff and your police can't deal effectively with this unless there's an ordinance with established levels. Just to give you an example, and I'm told this, I'm representing what I've been told, next week, week from the night, there'll be an event, touring group, Skrillex, which, this is next week, out on Pensacola Street, that bills itself as the loudest outdoor touring show in America. And we've invited them here with no noise ordinance, and I don't know what's going to happen to the residents of that area. We just urge you to return to this. We're glad to work with you. We were encouraged by the ordinance. There were a few things, for example, the allowable noise levels that we disagreed with. We urged enforcement mechanisms, but we hope that you'll return and would be pleased if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This is a good opportunity to ask for an update on the stakeholders' group meetings, if we could have that.
You want it now?
At another meeting.
Okay, because I don't know the answer, but I will find out for you.
The, I think the only other speaker we have on unagended items is Joe West. We will have speakers on public hearing items, but we'll take them as each public hearing comes forward.
Come on up, Joe.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Some of you know who I am. My name is Joe West. I live at 1984 Lorette Drive here in Tallahassee, 32301. I am the president of Veteran Events in Tallahassee, the organization that took over the Veterans Day Parade in 2010. We have worked very hard to bring back our Veterans Day Parade from what was very close to the brink of extinction and have had great success with the parade that we produce. We, two years ago, began the process when we received a rather large donation to try to bring in an event that might stir the emotions of the community, the business community, and gain more support for the parade. Our biggest problem in the last five years has always been our finances. As you know, I've never come before this board and asked for financial support for our organization before. We try very hard not to rely on anything. We're bringing in a display to Tom Brown Park, November 6th through the 10th, called "The Cost of Freedom Tribute." It's an 80,000-square-foot display that honors everyone who has ever stood in harm's way to protect our country and our way of life. There are storyboards from the Revolutionary War through Afghanistan. There's an 80% size mock-up of the Vietnam Memorial Wall. There's a gold dog tag collection wall of everyone killed in the Global War on Terror. There's a tribute to the 9/11 victims. We have ceremonies planned every night. The one on Sunday night will honor our firefighters, first responders, and law enforcement officers who every day stand in harm's way to protect our way of life. We overextended ourselves, thinking that we would get a lot of support from the business community when we did this. That has not been forthcoming up to this point. I have gone before the county and requested $5,000, which they granted us. I put a request in to the city for the same amount of money. Unfortunately, management said the only way we could do that was if I made a direct appeal to the commissioners, and that's what I'm here doing. My fear is not that we won't have the Cost of Freedom Tribute. It is going to happen. We've already paid the $18,000 to bring it in. My fear is that we will end up bankrupting Vet Events' tally and not have an organization to handle our Veterans Day Parade in the future. That's my fear. Maybe, maybe when this gets here, the excitement in the community will generate the funds we're hoping to get. We've got a plan for everyone that visits us, both at the North Florida Fair and at Tom Brown Park, that we're going to try and get 500 people to pledge $5 a month. If we had that, that would pay for our parade for the next however many years we had that commitment from people. So that's our goal, is to ask 500 people to pledge $5 a month. They could be given out of their checking account, and they'd never see it. But right now, we're in trouble. We're having to not order flags that we've always given away to the people at the parade. We don't have shirts to give our volunteers this year. We've, and I take total responsibility for this. I thought we would have more than what we got, and I find myself in a position coming and asking this commission if they would grant us a $5,000 grant this one time. That's all.
Any comments, Commissioner?
I'd be in favor of that, if we get staff to vet it. I mean, certainly, you look what, not only does the Veterans Parade give us an opportunity to say thank you to the men and women who have stood for our freedom, but it also is an economic driver for our community. It helps merchants as well, and I'd be in favor of it.
Any other comments?
We've tried to get away from, I see that you've been trying to raise money--
Yes, ma'am.
--all along, and so you don't, you've been put in the position where you have to, you've got it down to the last minute. But we've been trying to get away from that kind of response. So I don't know what the financial source of the money would be.
We'll have to look into it. Mr. West, is there anything that we could do that would be indirect service, a service we could provide that would be part of your cost of doing the parade? Is there anything we could look at in that regard?
Actually, you all have, your Parks and Recreation Department is working hand-in-hand with us and have waived fees and charges for us to use Tom Brown Park. They've made exceptions. The city's done everything we've asked them to do up to this point, and we're, as every year you do. Again, we're just at a position that unfortunately I have to come in and I have to ask for money. Like, just, I didn't like going to the county to do it, and I don't like coming here to do it.
So is the money needed for the display itself?
The money's needed, no, the display is paid for. Now it's all the, now it's all the support things for the display, the stage, the lighting, port-alets, my mind's kind of going blank, to support water. I mean, just the things that you need when you're going to have 1,000 or 2,000 people a day come through an area, in an area that normally sees maybe 50 people a day, so.
Well, are there, Commissioner, I'm sorry?
No, I'd like to join in asking the manager's support and trying to see what, if anything, we could do, but I would ask in return to you because it's a very, you know, we try to set some rules and regulations around how we make these kinds of expenditures, that in the future years, if you will go through the appropriate process for the city sponsorship, would be tremendously helpful. I mean, I think this parade is probably one that would stand on its merits against other similarly competing organizations. But it's hard to do that when it comes at the last minute and it comes outside of the process. So I'd be willing to ask the manager to see what, by way of in-kind or otherwise, we might be able to pull together for support. And in return, would ask, you know, that you all make a commitment to, in future years, fall into the process that has been created to help us avoid organizations coming directly to the commission.
I would like to say that we have, for the last four parades, this is our fifth parade, we've never had to come ask you for money. We do, we do get in-kind donation and support from the city, and a lot of it, and through police officers, through Parks and Recreation, we get a lot of support from you. We've never had to ask you for money before, and I'm hoping to the Lord that we never have to ask anybody for it again. I find myself at a point, my fear again, is that if we don't get substantial contributions while that's going on, Vet Events' tally may cease to exist, the parade will go back to the county, and I have nothing against the county, but they don't have the manpower or the people to maintain the parade at the level we've brought it up to. We put about 25,000 people on the street every Veterans Day, and we're really proud of all we've done.
That's right.
So I hope I never have to ask you all for money again. That's what I hope.
I understand. Would you just repeat for the public's sake what your ask is around the 500 people, I think it was $5?
We're, we've got a drive going on. We're working with it on some of the talk radio shows, and we'll have it at Cost of Freedom, we'll have it in all, we have, hand out 10,000 programs at the parade, and we'll have a slip in every program asking people, please commit $5 a month. If we can get 500 people to do that, we will be financially secure, and we won't have to depend on anybody's donations to do anything. So that's, that's the goal, is to make us completely financially independent, where we don't have to go to anybody and ask them for money, because we don't like to do that. Quite honestly, you know, it's the city's parade. It's the people's parade to honor their veterans. Government shouldn't be paying for that. You all got enough stuff to pay for. I feel bad that I'm even here asking. I don't like this. But I don't, I don't see, I don't see a choice. If you all can't do that, I'm going to have about 35 really restless nights wondering what's going to happen on November 4th. about 35 really restless nights wondering what's going to happen on November 11th. I mean, I know we'll have a parade, but on November 12th, will we have an organization that's still financially sound enough to do it next year? That's my fear.
Again, I support the, and hopefully you'll get some commitments from us.
We have, I think, four other speakers on un-agenda items that'll take us right to or just past 6 o'clock public hearings, all on the noise ordinance. If you want to go ahead and take them, we'll roll on through.
Sure.
Okay. The only thing I have to say is that the noise ordinance is in a process, and we've got four or five public hearings tonight, and we've been, we're on this, what is there to talk about? We have assigned this to the stakeholders group. Mia has pointed out to me that the stakeholders group hasn't been meeting the way they should be, which is why I've asked for an update. But other than that, I mean, that's where we're at. We're at that point where we're waiting for those stakeholders to sit together, and I see Rick Moore here, so you're on the line, too. We put together this group at the request of all parties, and it's our job as government to facilitate these meetings so that you all can discuss amongst yourselves what your various issues are and come to some sort of recommendations for us. Other than that, I mean, we're just doing exactly what we've been doing for the last two years, is where you're coming directly to us and you're asking us for an action that we basically can't take until the stakeholders group is finished with their work. So having said that, welcome to our meeting. And if you want to go ahead and speak, then, you know, just want you to know.
We should move forward with speakers.
And we do have one speaker before that. I thought he had left, but I see Washington Sanchez had also asked to speak, and so he'll be our next speaker, and he'll be followed by Mia Sargel.
All right.
Washington Sanchez, 2229 Gates Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I thought it was going to be a break this while if he came back. I'm here just to thank you. Thank you for veterans. I'm representing the Florida Veteran Foundation and the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 758. And the reason why I think it's appropriate to thank you, because we always come as veterans asking for some type of handout, asking you to help us do something in particular. This time, all I want to do is to say to you that you have done what we've asked you to do. You became a Purple Heart city, first one in the United States. You also have wrapped a Purple Heart bus, which is a moving billboard advertising for veterans. And that's what it means to a lot of people as they see it and they question the reason why that bus is like it is. The pilot program that you just started about two weeks ago is really working, and I want to thank Ivan Melanota, who is here in the audience, for that particular effort, because he thought, and we thought, that somebody may rush the system and start with 100 or 200 veterans signing up for these yearly passes. That has not happened. It's being controlled. It's simple, but it's being controlled, and only about 50 have signed up. These are people who actually need help to get to appointments, to get to job interviews, to get to jobs, and to get to things that they really have to do. That is really going to be helpful. And what it's going to do is help our veterans get to appointments so that they later can apply for benefits, which will bring new money in the Tallahassee into Leon County. That's very important. I want to tell you, the people out making this happen last night at our Purple Heart Sociedad Dinner, we had the people from the marketing, that is Sandra Manning and Ivan, trying to think of the lady's name, Sandra and Levana Sampson, and Lauren Platt. They came out to our meeting. They presented a few things to us, which was really neat. We appreciate it, a big banner, what have you. But more importantly, they brought some news that I didn't know of, that would be announced later, is that on November 11th, all veterans will be able to ride the bus free. And that's on Veterans Day, which is great once again. So I want to just say to you that the commission here have done what a lot of cities have not been able to do. You're one of two cities in the state of Florida who have wrapped a bus, a Purple Heart bus, to make our veterans feel like they are desirable. And you're one of three that's doing free bus transportation for veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Next speaker is Mia Sargel, followed by Barbara Stancel.
I'm Mia Sargel, 1515 Seminole Drive in Tallahassee. I'm here tonight, thank you, Commissioner Miller. I do understand that you have pursued that, and what we probably should have written on our request line was simply noise rather than the ordinance itself. There is a coalition of in-town neighborhoods that has been meeting very loosely or stayed in contact with one another for over a fairly long period of time now. And there is also a Facebook page, which I know Commissioner Miller is on, called Noise Free Tallahassee. There has been increasing disappointment, distress, and really rising anger in the city, in all quadrants of the city, about the fact that the police are completely impotent in the face of noise. We've come to ask for three things. We were going to have a thing where we had 12 neighborhoods here that we would have after your open hearings. I think since Mr. Parsons has broached this already, and you're not quite as tired as you will be later, that we will try to do it now and do it very quickly. The speaker who follows me will simply be asking that you let the others identify themselves. The three things that we are here to ask are, first, that some kind of interim policy be designed that will give the police some kind of possible action in the city. The county has a policy as well as an ordinance, which seems to cover live bans, and that is one of the things, as Mr. Parsons' statement indicated, is getting to be a real problem. The second thing was to ask whether the committee could be reinstated, which I know that you were working on, Commissioner Miller, and I thank you. The break of two and a half months after a single meeting at which only one of the people from the business community appeared is disappointing, to say the least. The third thing was to ask, please, that the acoustical expert who is being hired have input into the ordinance itself, not just be there to educate the committee, which was the statement that Mr. Tetter made the last time, at the Kona meeting the other day. There were, as I said, 12 neighborhoods from southeast, which is those three neighborhoods south of Appalachia Parkway, Indian Head, Myers Park, and Woodland Drives, from the midtown area, from the southwest, I'm sorry, the northwest, and from the southern part of South City, of which we are the northern part, A&amp;M Neighborhood, Tullan Neighborhood, and, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the other one. The midtown neighborhood...
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Stancel, and then followed by Mary Poehl.
I relinquish my [inaudible].
You are next. If you will give your name and address for the record, and for those who wanted to yield their time, you can yield it, but it doesn't mean that adds another three minutes to the other speaker. So each will still have three minutes each.
Mary Poehl, 2305 Miranda Avenue. I'm here simply to embody the fact that northwest Tallahassee is also having a problem, just to demonstrate the extent of the issue, and that we, again, are really suffering. What can be done in terms of a stopgap measure, and what can be done to facilitate this larger group that Ms. Miller referred to, because, again, we are really suffering all over Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Pat Seon is, at this time, the final un-agenda speaker I have. Others are on public hearing items.
Pat Seon, 1009 High Road. I live on the northwest side of Tallahassee, about probably four city blocks off Tennessee. It's really, the noise is really problematic, and I would encourage that the commission approach this noise ordinance sooner rather than later, get something into effect, give TPD the authority to handle parties, loud noise, bans, whatever comes up that is disturbing to neighborhoods. The Party Patrol was very effective when it was being used. I would like to see that put back into action this fall and spring. That's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your consideration and for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Commissioners, I'm just going to make a quick comment on these series of speakers. I'm not thrilled with the fact that we have a band that's going to portray themselves as the world's loudest band coming to Tallahassee. And, you know, I know we're working through this noise ordinance, but maybe when it comes to bands and things like that, because I know we have some things happening in some areas that were never in plan to happen, and we really do have put our police department in a difficult situation. Maybe there is something on an interim basis that we could come up with that has to do with live bans, because if we don't have anything, and yet we're controlling ourselves at Cascades Park, I don't think that's fair to anyone in this community. So perhaps we could work on something on an interim basis. I don't know if there's an appetite in the rest of the commission, but I'd sure like to know your thoughts.
Well, one thing that comes to mind, and I don't think Shaw Stillers here, but Lou Shelley can probably help us with this. There has been an ordinance in, I believe, Sarasota that has been through the court system and has made it out alive. That's given us some guidance. That was going to be a place where the stakeholders group began to discuss. I will tell you that I believe that there's a snagged-over agreement on all parties' sides on who this sound expert is going to be, and staff is trying to come up with someone that they feel will be affordable and acceptable to everyone on all sides. That's another issue that's, because I immediately, when I found out they'd only met once, went to staff and said, what's going on here? So as far as an interim, I don't have an answer. The only thing that I could offer is that pretty quickly, somebody looks at that Sarasota ordinance and says, and you all, I don't know what the process would be if you want to try that. But on the other hand, I have to say, in having just met with Chief DeLeo this week, I mean, we've got an exhausted police chief who is revitalizing an entire department. He is, to put another thing on him at this time is, I don't know if it won't be more, we would like for him to stay here. And at this point, he is so absolutely inundated with 25 different major problems that have to be overcome, both internal and external. So that's something that we ought to be considering, I feel, at the same time that we do this. Because if you'll remember, it was at his request when he first got here that we wait, and that's what really gave us the impetus and the time to set up the stakeholders group and go through that process. So we need to move some of this forward, though. We're at a logjam. Let's move some of this forward. So do you have any comments?
We can certainly look at interim solution based on Sarasota-type ordinance. We spent quite a bit of time in the last month talking with the chief and the new leadership over there about enforcement. And quite honestly, one of our concerns is going to be whether we get an interim ordinance or more comprehensive ordinance. We still have to have the manpower to enforce it, and typically, the time that it needs to be enforced is exactly the time for the calls for service in other areas is very high. And as you indicated, and certainly everybody's aware, the last couple of months, several months, that the police department has certainly had its hands full in dealing with other issues. I won't say more serious problems, but certainly from the perspective, I think, of police management, priority-wise, demands that they be looking at those. But I can promise you, commissioners, we have been talking about and looking at and in conversation with areas that have what you described as an interim situation for particular problems, moving something quickly forward. I still am concerned that, we've looked at the Party Patrol. We spent time talking with the new police leadership on that. Right now, they don't have the manpower, even with the additional officers, to reinstitute that, given the other issues and crimes that they're trying to deal with. So irrespective of what, I can certainly bring to you, and we can get past before the end of the year, an interim sound ordinance, and I'm happy to do that and to have that discussion with you as a group and individually immediately. But we're still going to have the issue of enforcement, and we've been concerned from the start of having an ordinance, and the expectations go up that everything's going to get resolved. And it sounds still going to be a low priority item on the typical weekend event, weekend where we have football games or other major activities that sap the available police resources at the same time that sound problems typically develop. So that's where we are right now. Rest assured that staff and police in Wayne Shop, in City Attorney's Shop, we have continued to work on this the last two months, but will certainly be happy to present to you very quickly a sound ordinance that we can deem to be a stopgap measure or an interim measure.
Go ahead.
At this point, I don't think that without your having at least presented it to all the parties involved before it gets here, and hearing some input from them, it's going to do any good. I mean, that's my two-years-of-working-on-it perspective, because, I mean, at this point, we've heard from everybody, we've heard from everybody on each side, and until they sit down and look at, and then finally, we had a product that had been, you know, through the courts, and I thought, well, okay. And I thought that, I believe the plan was that that would be presented to you all next, and then you could go through it as, but together. You've got to work together. I mean, that's just that. And until that is accomplished, I don't know what more we can do.
Commissioner, we're going to move to public hearing. The city attorney has expressed that he'll look at the Sarasota ordinance and try to find some temporary relief for areas that we're clearly having a problem. So if we could go ahead and move to public hearing?
Okay. We have five public hearings on tonight's agenda, and the first one is 15.01, and the city attorney will offer those.
Agenda on 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on two ordinances, ordinance number 14-0-42 and 14-0-43. They both deal with electric, the first one, and water rates, the second one. Again, need to read into the record, and we need two separate votes on the two ordinances. Ordinance 14-0-42 is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-226, 227, 228, 229, 230, 231, 234, 235, 236, 237, 238 of the City of Tallahassee Code relating to electric service, including applicable charges and relating to electric service, including applicable charges and rates. And item, ordinance number 14-0-43 is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 21-281, City of Tallahassee Code relating to water service, including applicable charges and rates. Final public hearing on both of these ordinance, and we have Reese Code to, for start the public hearing, Reese Code will give us a brief summary of the ordinances.
It'll be briefer than the introduction.
That's what I was just saying, Madam Manager. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Commissioners. We will be brief. You've seen most of this information, but we wanted to take the opportunity to share it, to summarize the item, and to highlight the proposed changes. As Mr. Attorney indicated, it involves both electric and water, and we'll just take a moment here. I apologize. I'd like to start with a quick update. We'll bring back an item to you in December about the double rebates program that happened in September. I bring that up because it is relevant to what we're doing tonight. That's part of an overall conservation effort, part of our Energy Smart Plus program portfolio that's designed to encourage conservation, avoid the construction of power facilities, and ultimately result in lower long-run costs than we would otherwise experience. The, the good news is, the double rebates program that we had in place for the end of September, and you may remember the, the real impetus for that was the sales tax holiday that the state of Florida put in place. It was the first one. We wanted to, to add to that, add to the success of that, and we had estimated participation somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 rebates per week. You may recall, it was about a two-week period. We actually, so far, the results, they're early, but we will have final results in December, we have received more than three times that amount. And in fact, our, our projections were based on our prior experience with double rebates, so we've been very successful. It's very encouraging, and it's consistent with the pattern that we see. The graphic in front of you on your screen shows that it's a residential graphic. It shows that our customers are engaging in conservation. Our customers are using less. In this case, since 2003, our residential customers are using 21% less electricity than they did in the prior 10 years. Similarly, in water, 17% less. So, so it's, it's a factor that's baked into our approach. It impacts ultimately what our rates are and what our projected needs are, because it, it reduces the need for expensive capital facilities. So I wanted to start the conversation with that, because that's part of the rate study. Those are some of the assumptions that go into the rate study that was conducted by Leidos Engineering. At your last meeting, you had a presentation from Craig Shepard. He talked about these things, and I'm going to share some of his slides, just as a bit of a recap real quick, so you can see. The approach, this, in this case, it's the electric utility. The approach was that it was a fully allocated cost of service study. What that means is, we look at the overall system cost, and then we look down into each respective rate class to determine the adequacy of rates. You can see from your graphic, the leftmost part of the chart, you see residential. You see in the, kind of the bluish bar, it represents how much rate revenue is projected for the residential class in this next budget year. And then you can see in the purplish bar, that is actually the cost that the consultants derive. So it's a measure of, are the rates that you have in place today adequate to meet costs assigned to that class? And you can see, in this case, the residential class is projected to produce, the revenues from the residential class are projected, projected to produce about $300,000 more than the actual cost. So it's very, very close, certainly within estimating range. You can then see, if you move to your right, the general service non-demand, those are our small businesses. That's the terminology we use in the electric tariffs, but that's our small businesses. It's close, it's a, it's about a million and a half short. And then a little further to your right, the third bar from the left, third verticals from the left, that's our medium and large businesses. You can see that collectively, that's about $6.8 million short. So that gives us a picture of what our rates are doing today relative to the cost of service. And then that, the consultant then can use that information to develop the recommended rates, and that's what you have in front of you tonight. So I'm going to show you some comparisons. What I'd like to do is then translate that to, what, what does that mean to bills? I think that's the most important thing. The recommendations that you have in front of you, and the ordinances that you have, how does that impact our bills and, and our customers? I'll start with, excuse me, I'll start with residential. You can see here, in, in the case of residential, we wanted to include water, because that's relevant to tonight's discussion, and we wanted to show you how much customers are paying today versus over time. And what you can see is, that our residential customers, the bills actually, under the proposed rates for residential customers, which there is no recommended increase because of the cost of service study, you can see the proposed rates are 7.7% less, the bills, rather, the proposed bills are 7.7% less than they were in 2003. So that's a positive trend. The reason that is, is because, as I showed you earlier, customers are using less. So the result of, of the rates that we have in place today, the cost of service study, and the conservation effort, actually has resulted in lower bills for our residential customers today. We see a very similar trend for our commercial customers, because they too are using less. As we look over time, we see that all of our commercial classes are using less. And this is another representation. It's a comparison of our residential bills to our peers around the state. And you can see, we fall just below the average. You probably can't read those numbers, but the, in this case, using a typical comparison level, a bill would be about $117 a month. The state average is in the neighborhood of $122 a month, and you can see, it's a pretty wide continuum from low to high. We fall below the statewide average, and that's our residential class. Again, there's no proposed change to those rates.
Reese.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go any further, can you show me where Talquin is on this?
This, this one does not include Talquin, as it's a cooperative utility. This includes the investroan utilities and the municipal utilities. The cooperative utilities don't report their information, so it's not readily available. Talquin is in the neighborhood of, they're just less than $140,000. So they would be up toward the top, or the right part of that graph. This graphic represents our small businesses. They, they represent the majority of our commercial customers, about 80%. So when we talk about commercial customers, the vast majority of those customers are in fact considered small businesses, and that runs the gamut. You name it, if you asked me if a customer was a small business, the answer probably is yes, because it's offices, it's stores, it's a variety of different kinds of customers. You can see the proposed rate moves up. The current rate is in the leftmost bar, it's kind of shaded in red, proposed is kind of the bluish-purple. It moves up 4.9% based on the recommendation, and it continues to be the lowest rate in the state of Florida for small businesses.
I had a question on that, Mr. Goode. So I've read in, in the Tallahassee Democrat, that Mr. Boudier said that we were balancing the budget on the backs of small businesses. So let me make sure that I heard that correctly. We have the lowest small business rate in the state of Florida, out of all 410 cities and 67 counties that stretch from Century and Pensacola to the north, all the way to Key West in the south. We have the lowest small business rate of any of those, and even with the proposed increase, would still be the lowest small rate, small business rate?
Yes, sir, that is, that is exactly correct.
Great, I just want to make that point.
It is something that we're very sensitive to as well. I'll move on quickly, almost done here. We wanted to give you a representation of our medium businesses and our large businesses as well. And you can see from these bars, we would move up a little bit in the pack, but we would remain in the lowest quartile. And so what that means is, whether it's our institutional customers, or whether it's our manufacturing customers, or just local businesses, their rates would remain low relative to their peers around the state. The same is true for our large businesses. The large businesses represent a really wide variety of customers, whether it's retail customers, institutional customers, a pretty big variety, very similar position to the medium. Again, all of our commercial rates are among the lowest. Even with the proposed change of more or less 5%, 4.9% for our small business, 5.7% for our medium and large businesses, we, our rates would remain competitive, and then they would be based on the cost of service as determined by our consultant.
Reese.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go any further, if you don't mind me jumping in, I know that out of the top 10, at least I've seen this in the past, the top, out of the top 10 electric users, that seven or eight of them are public.
Yes, ma'am, that is entirely true. State of Florida, Florida State University, Florida A&amp;M, Leon County, those are, the City of Tallahassee certainly are in that top 10. It is not until you get toward the bottom of that top 10, do you find some retailers, I won't name those, Walmart, you might imagine, those that have a large presence in our town. And the, the collective usage, so if they have multiple stores, we've aggregated that.
I wanted to ask you, how many of, how many, I'm trying to figure out exactly how to ask this, how many, how many actual businesses are there that are in this, this 200-kilowatt range in the top? I mean...
There are about 100.
Okay, that's good enough, thank you.
There are about 15,000 commercial customers. This grouping represents about 100. And then finally, there is a proposal to increase the water rates. We're very fortunate in Tallahassee and our surrounding area to have plentiful clean water that we can pump out of the ground, provide to our homes and businesses with not a lot of treatment, and what that results in are low water rates. So you can see, when we compare our rates, the existing, even the proposed, are nearly the lowest in the state. That's because of our good fortune where we are. The proposed increase is 72 cents per month for a typical household, because in fact, that rate is relatively low. So we wanted to share that with you. Again, you've seen most of this, but we wanted to make sure we have that information.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, let's withhold any comments if we could at this point, and we'll go ahead and move to the speakers.
We're going to have speakers on either the electric rate ordinance, oil and water rate.
The first speaker will be Sam McKay, and be followed by Doug Crowley. And as with our unattended speakers, I'll ask if you'll give your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your remarks.
Good evening, Sam McKay, at 3233 Majestic Prince Trail, 32309. I come up for you just to ask if we can postpone any type of vote on the electric increase, specifically as it relates to commercial buildings. I've had a chance to look at some of the reports, and the cost of services compared to commercial buildings does seem high compared to electrical delivery, but I'm curious to see if the cost of services on the water feature, because the increase will be the same across all residential and commercial, is equivalent to that of the electrical. Because I would think if the cost of services is more for a commercial building, it would make sense to me that it might be more for water as well, not that we're looking for more commercially, but I'm just curious to see the, the correlation between the two. And in addition to that, the other cities that were shown in the display, I'm curious to see how our cost of service relates to theirs as far as expenditures in relation to the utility cost. So as far as the commercial establishments, I'm a hotelier here in the market, so the hotel properties that I've managed in the past, between the counties and other things, we pride ourselves of being the best of the best. So we love our visitors that come in, but this would add, if it's a 5% increase, it's a 5% onto the bill of something we would have to take to the bottom line as a manager or ownership group, because we certainly can't pass that along to a, a guest, saying that that's a utility increase. That would not be very good for, for marketing or for the city of that, in, in that nature. But I was just curious if a vote could be postponed, so that maybe further study is done, or maybe it has been, to indicate the cities that we're comparing ourselves for rate, if in fact, we're at the same cost of service as well, or if there's an opportunity there with expenditures as far as utilities, to maybe look that way, to maybe save some money, so that if there is an increase, maybe it's not so much, or maybe it's a graduated increase. And in relation to increases, I'd also request that there be something done where there could be rebates or incentives for businesses with energy conservation as well, such as an example in a hotel, we could clean all of our PTACs or VTACs, which is the air conditioning units inside of the building. We do at the facility I'm at, and it reduced our energy bill by 7%. So something along that way, where the businesses, we just replaced all the washers and dryers to energy-star efficient ones, but there's nothing in line for commercialism as far as the properties, any type of rebates or incentives. It's clearly worked very well on the residential side. I partake of that at my house. We've had the insulation done, we've had the doors done, we've had the air conditioning done, all of that good stuff, so we appreciate that. But on the commercial side, it would be interesting to see if the same would hold true with that. So I think that would be good, maybe if, if a vote could be postponed, just to gather some more information to see if we're comparing apples to apples. And that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Doug Crowley, and then followed by Rick Moore, and that's the last speaker I have on this particular public hearing.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello, Commissioner.
Thank you for allowing me to come up. I am here, Doug Crowley, 2814 Remington Green Circle, on behalf of Remington Green Owners Association. As you know, if those of you are familiar with the northeast side, we have quite a few office buildings out there, a lot of workers. And my concern is the rate increase. I can appreciate that when somebody tells me, well, you're among the lowest in the state, and I don't know anything about anybody seeing somebody's budget as being balanced on the backs of small business, I can only say, I'm glad to know that we're low in some area, and I think that's a good thing, but now. But to go up 5.7%, and somebody's telling me that it's based on cost of service, I got to say, whoa, back up, something's wrong, because how is it costing more for the City of Tallahassee to serve an office park such as Remington Green, as it does, any more cost to that than it would be a neighborhood across the street? You're using the same feeder lines, same transmission lines, same generating facility. And I think that the question is, and ought to be looked at, what is this cost based on? Now, I can, we don't have any guaranteed power supply contracts. Our power goes out just as regularly as anyone else's does in town, and I'm seeing for the whole complex. And so I'm asking you, before you pass this, to consider, it's taking a little bit longer, and let's review, what are these costs? Now, I know some of you up there have businesses, and you pay your utility bill, and I hear them talking about medium-sized and small. Well, I pulled a utility bill before I came up here, and our kilowatt hour's uses is over 5,000 kilowatts, just for one office building. Yet, they're saying that's a medium-sized business. At least, that's the category I'm seeing on here. Now, I'm always standing to be corrected, because as I say, you know, only thing I know is how little I do know, and I battle my ignorance all the time. And in this situation here, I'm not sure this is making sense, Commissioners. I just encourage you, slow down, let's look at it, and if it's the right thing, hey, I'm for you. But I'm not real sure to date that it is, and I have to admit, I only recently got all of this information this afternoon. Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, as Mr. Moore comes forward, if we could get Mr. Goode afterwards to sit down with Commissioner Crowley and walk him through his bill there.
Go ahead, Rick.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rick Moore. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. 22 days ago, I was asked to begin a leadership year there, and this really is the first issue and opportunity since that time we've had to interface with, with the commission. I want to start by saying thank you. The, the city is an incredible partner in economic development in making the City of Tallahassee a vibrant, positive business environment. And our encouragement is that we continue to move things in the right direction. When the business economy dipped, the city was among the first to roll back concurrency fees and find ways to, to make progress, allow progress to continue even, even in a down economy. So as things come up, and as we stare at the possibility of an increase of our low starting position of our, of our electric bill, we just wanted to express that we would appreciate your continued attention to try to maintain Tallahassee as a positive, low-cost, business-friendly place to, to do business. On the specific issue of the increase of electric rates, and if there was an opportunity for discussion or dialogue or, or community input, we wanted to offer the chamber and a relationship that we have built over a number of years, to be a convener of people and ideas around discussions that, where the interface of government and, and business come together. This has been kind of fast on the uptake. We've tried to catch up as rapidly as we can. There have been no board meetings this year, there is can. There have been no board meetings this year. There is no official board position, just the general concept that anything we can do to work with the city to maintain a low cost of doing business, and maintain open lines of communication as we tackle important issues together, we would like to extend that offer from our perspective. And again, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
No other speakers on 1501?
Commissioners, you know, the, I appreciate each of the speakers who came in. Mr. Moore, I know not an easy issue to inherit as a Chamber Chairman, as your first major issue as Chamber Chairman, but good luck to you, and we do look forward to continued partnership. And, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think this Commission has really tried to be a good friend to business, understanding that, you know, small business is the lifeblood of this community. You all thriving means this community thrives. So when we did utility rebates, when we did expedited permitting, when we did the local preference policy at the height of the downturn in the economy, those were all intentions to make the business community and their transition to a difficult economy be a little bit more eased. But as the graphs show, our residential customers are paying more than their fair share. You didn't go over this in your presentation, Reese, but there are about 900 customers, many of them medium-sized and large, who participate in a pretty generous discount of the utility. I don't want to go into that. If you didn't, was that deliberately omitted? Or, okay, well, roughly of about 7%. And even this new rate structure does not erode that 7%. It, it still has a built-in discount for our business customers. And that's intended, I think, to communicate that we value business, we value what it does for our community. We do want to keep some level of discount in place. But at the same token, as the cost of, of doing business on all ends rises, we've got to make sure that we keep pace. And so I appreciate that this is happening at, at a time where natural gas prices look like they are on the dive. And my hope is that what this means for the, the customer, the business customer, is that they don't see drastic increases in the, in the costs that they can expect to experience. Because as Commissioner Crowley pointed out, we could very well be the lowest in the state, but it probably doesn't make a bit of difference to the person paying the bill if it's higher than what it was before. And it will be higher than it was before, and I think we have to be sensitive to that. But with that, I would, I would move, are we on the first or second public hearing?
You know, we're, it's only one public hearing, so we're moving option one and option two.
Which of the two different items?
Two different, option one deals with the electric rate increase, option two with the water.
And we did both public hearings at once, is that right?
Correct.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Miller?
Well, I wanted to address Commissioner Crowley's comments about the operating expenses of the utility and where the costs were and so on. Not this, not this year, but probably two years ago, when I was, first two years of my reign here as City Commissioner, I asked about the operating expenses and had them. In fact, the first three or four months of my, my time here, I spent almost all my time learning about the electric utility. But one of the things that they had pointed out when I asked a question about operating expenses is that, and I'll, I'll look to our staff to verify this, but the, the operating expenses are flat. I mean, they're, and actually, I believe declining slightly. I mean, they have really, when you look at the, the pattern of operating expenses, the fact that they're serving so many more people than they were serving, you know, five or 10 years ago, at virtually the same operating cost, you, and, and see the things that they have chosen to do to keep those costs constrained, it's, it's extremely professional, and I would say, equal to the efforts of any private industry out there. So on that particular note, staff can comment or not, but I, my last look, they were, they were pretty tight on their operating costs.
Commissioner Gillum.
Yeah, if staff could also address, if you are, were coming to the podium, the, I think one of the speakers mentioned that maybe there wasn't incentives built in for businesses on maybe some of the loan programs for updating equipments and so forth. Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. I'll, I'll try to hit the, the high points. You pointed out a program that we actually have. It is exclusive to our medium and large businesses. We, we call it a preferred customer electric discount. We're the only utility in the state of Florida to offer that discount, and about 900 of our local businesses take advantage of it. That discount was about $4.5 million last year, so it's quite substantial. That, that tops the list, because that's, represents the bulk of the discount that, that any of our customers might receive, or, or programs that we might otherwise offer. We do make loans to some of our businesses. We've made about 1 million, a little over 1 million dollars in loans to those businesses that need help with energy efficiency improvements. Depending upon the small businesses, they can access some of our rebates, much like a residential customer. We do loans for PV. I'm probably going to forget a whole bunch of things that we do. But we do have a, a nice portfolio of programs, depending upon small business, medium and large businesses. And I apologize, I forgot the second half of the question.
Well, I mean, you, you hit it for me. I'm not sure if, and then I, so I just want to clarify, we are continuing that preferred customer discount, even after this suggested change for medium and large customers?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Any other questions? Called for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to say one other thing.
Passed unanimously.
This is, on a $1,000 electric bill, we're talking about a $57 increase, just to put it into real dollars, so.
Passed unanimously. Next.
Item 1502 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance 14-0-45. It's the proposed extension of the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority boundaries. And the ordinance is entitled, again, ordinance 14-0-45, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 6-1 of the Tallahassee Code of General Ordinances by expanding the geographic boundaries of the downtown area served by the Downtown Improvement Authority, and directing the city treasurer clerk to provide notice of the expanded boundary, boundaries of the downtown area to the Leon County property appraiser and tax collector.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
We do have a speaker on this item.
Sorry, sorry.
Susan Campbell, and I believe that's the only speaker we have on this item 1502.
My name is Susan Campbell, and I live at 1101 Cherokee Drive. And I'm here to speak to this issue because I have some concerns that the fact that Cascade Park was originally planned as a passive park has kind of been thrown out the window, and it's not being given what I feel might be adequate consideration, as we, as I read the stuff that the Downtown Improvement Authority hopes to accomplish with this change. The amphitheater in Cascade Park was an addition, a late addition, and in hindsight, it doesn't seem that it was placed that well for the people who live near it. And when the amphitheater facing that way, and the fact that it was planned as a passive park, we also don't have adequate parking for people who come to the events that are held there now. And so we rely on the state for some of those. And if we're gonna have many, many more, 10 ticketed events is what we have now, and once I heard a city staffer, who's still in the city staff, say, oh, there'll be hundreds. That's two a weekend to get to hundreds, or some during the week. I think it's really early in the game to talk about how you're gonna market events, how you're gonna have, activate the park, need a trusted source to, to do this marketing and stuff. It's not even a year old. They're still getting their bearings. We've still got events there all the time. Some of them are inappropriate. I think perhaps Battle of the Bands, as close to the houses it is, this might not be appropriate at that location. So as, as the Downtown Improvement Authority expands into this area, and the hope is that this will stimulate other uses and other commercial uses nearby, I'd like you to know that parking is a problem when the Edison opens out of the 60 parking spaces that the park has to its use, and some of those are constantly used by DOT. The estimate is that 40 will be given to use of the employees and the guests of the restaurant. How are you gonna promote that? I mean, how's that gonna look for your guests who come from out of town for your Downtown Improvement Authority when there's nowhere to park except in our neighborhoods? And as far as the other development that you hope that this will bring, I'd like to point out that we have already over 25 restaurants within walking distance of Cascade Park, and the next plans that the city's making, belonging to expand Good Buddy Lane, is more restaurants. Maybe it's time to take the foot off the gas on what we're doing at Cascade Park, live with it a little bit, and see how much sense it makes to take Downtown Improvement Authority and throw more development and more money at that same area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments? Commissioner Miller?
Well, first of all, I wanted to have Jay come up and address some of this, because the Downtown Improvement Authority is not a development agency in any way. I know, I understand that, and that's why I wanted him to come up and, and address that. But it is really an advocate for the area, basically, the existing people that are in the area. But he is a job, this is Jay Revel, he's the head of the Downtown Improvement Agency. I don't think there's any residential in the expansion area.
Not at this time. All the property that will be in the expansion area is publicly owned, non-taxable.
Would you clarify why you want, what your intent is in regards to the question?
I, I live in the adjacent area as well, so I'm, I'm a big fan of a lot of the things that go there. So our intention is to just make sure that, for example, we had three concerts that took place earlier this year that were the ticketed events. The marketing efforts that come behind that, that let everyone know, we think still need help. We're still learning how to market those events, how to make sure that they get to the public in a meaningful way, so that we don't lose money on some of those events, that we do sell those tickets out. We had a great event, just like last Sunday, was the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk was out there, phenomenal crowds, great things going on. We're constantly wanting to make sure that we're letting the public know about all these amazing things that are going on in the downtown area, so that people can enjoy these great public assets that the city and the county and the community has invested so heavily in. So that's our main angle, is just to promote the common usage of these places, and make sure that they're better connected to our existing downtown, and make sure that our downtown area continues to thrive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Proton, this breast cancer weekend walk, first of all, I think it may have been the most people I've seen in the park at one time.
It probably was.
And probably stretched, I think, the limits on parking capacity, so on and so forth. I parked in one of the state complexes. It was, it was, it was on rotation the whole time. I would be interested if the staff has gotten feedback on parking in the neighborhood. In some cities, where you have neighborhoods that are adjacent to high-activity areas, there are signs that only parking is permitted for folks with decals, or who live in the neighborhood. I don't know if we're at that stage yet, but I would, I would like to know. While I was out there, I thought about it. How was the impact, parking-wise, on the neighborhood? And maybe good, someone from parks or otherwise, to give back to us on what the impacts were.
Thank you. Calling for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Ziffer, if I could, real quick, before you call the next two public hearings, I have a special guest that has to leave, like she has to go, like she has to go to the bathroom. So if I could bring her real fast up front.
A friend of yours? A special friend.
This is Aurora. Aurora is five years old. She is a spade female, tri-color walker hound. She is a super-special girl that will make someone a perfect dog. She came in with her sister Aberdeen, and the two of them love to play together. She would make a great house companion and love to be your couch potato. She's currently on her vaccines, micro-tripped, and already fixed. Heartworm Help Assistance is available to help with the cost of her heartworm treatment, as well as any, all adoption fees are waived. If you're watching out there and in need of a pet, we'd love for you to adopt Aurora and perhaps her sister Aberdeen. And with that, she has to go to the bathroom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Commissioner Maddox, I have actually looked at this dog for us, but when I wasn't, well, that's a big step, actually. I wanted to adopt the last dog that you had here. But these two, both of them are just absolutely beautiful dogs. And I don't know if the camera can actually capture them up close, but I would love it if you would feature them on the, on the camera as opposed to me.
They're actually, they're a lot of fun, too, when they're out together. They play, both their tails go up, and they crawl up and down.
Can they give us an answer on how to solve?
So they really need to be both adopted together. I would hear that.
Absolutely. So you, you need both of them, Commissioner Miller.
Really pretty little dog, I tell you.
Okay.
Thank you, Grace.
On, on the next item, I'm gonna pass the gavel to Commissioner Gillum. I have a business relationship with the owners, and have spoken to the city attorney, and will not be voting on this.
City Attorney, you want to introduce the next item?
Item 1503 is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 14-0-38. It's a proposed amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance city of Tallahassee, Florida designated and including additional territory as and in residential preservation one on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission. Since it is the first of two public hearings, our action tonight is just to hold a public hearing on the item and to set the second and final public hearing for November 25th. That's the recommended option one.
Any speakers?
No speakers.
All right, show that action taken. Commissioner Ziffer, you're welcome back.
Move, move option one, which would set it for the, the hearing for the 24th.
So moved.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes.
The final public hearing will be held on November 25th.
Next item.
Next item is item 15-04. It's the first of two public hearings on ordinance number 14-0-39. Its title, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida designated and including additional territory as and in governmental operation one, with historic preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city of Tallahassee. Again, since it's the first of two public hearing, the recommended action under option one is to hold a public hearing, the first public hearing tonight, and to set the final public hearing for November 25th.
No speakers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Well, wait, we'd, no, final public, just to put it as a final public hearing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the final public hearing is agenda item 1505. It's also the first of two public hearings on ordinance number 14-0-40, titled, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory as and in governmental operation-one with historic preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city. The, tonight's first public hearing, the recommended action, is to hold that hearing and, tonight, and set the final public hearing for November 25th. Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Passed unanimously.
That concludes all the public hearings.
Sharing of ideas?
I have several.
Several?
Several.
I do. You're on.
First, I wanted to put in a plug for the Make a Difference Day that Move Tallahassee is putting on Saturday morning. If you'll check tallahassee.com, there's the details for that. And on November 1st, Run for Lawson, which is just a, a great cause and a great event that is in memory of Lawson Mayfield. I go every year, and they're a special, special family, and that's a special event. I want to encourage people to, to please go to that. Last night, I had the great fortune of seeing the American Authors perform, and the starring role was Adam Shelley, who had a guitar and banjo solo, and was tremendous. And Adam, of course, is the son of Lou and Linda Shelley. And first of all, the fact- And first of all, the fact that he is that talented is just astounding. I don't know if Lou has any musical talent, perhaps Linda does, but American Authors has the hit song, "The Best Day of Your Life," of my life, and what a fantastic song. It is used right now in the trailer for a movie with Bill Murray. It's been used in credit card commercials, and you hear it all the time. But it was a terrific show, and I want to thank the Shelly's and thank Adam for bringing such acclaim to the city of Tallahassee, and he is a proud product of Leon High. So I'm thrilled to death, and Faith Presbyterian Church, both of which I have a membership in. So I wanted to thank the Shelly's. And then finally, the last thing is, defying all the odds, all the odds, Sheriff Larry Campbell has lived another year, and today is his birthday. And if he's watching, I just want to say happy birthday, Sheriff, and we're glad you made it another year. Basically, just, we're worried that you die of old age. But he's not quite as old as Tom Coe. He's still going strong, and he is a dear friend, and I wanted to say happy birthday to the sheriff.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, anything?
Well, following along in his footsteps, I want to wish a happy birthday to my granddaughter, Audrey Care, who is three years old today. So I'm sure she'll grow up to be a sheriff or someone equally famous, but she's the daughter of my son Turi and his wife Brooke, and so happy birthday to all of them. The second item I had to bring to you was a request for consideration, and this is a little more serious. Last year, or in the last two years, we've had some seriously high-performing citizens committees. One was the Sales Tax Committee, one was the Ethics Committee, and another one was a Cultural Review Committee. And I believe that one of the reasons those folks were so high-performing is that by the time someone gets put on a committee by us, they are, they have really been given a great deal of concentration. In an effort to make other committees high-performing, and in particular, the COCA Committee, I would like to ask you all to consider moving that from just a mayoral appointee to a commission appointee. That requires a policy change, not a charter change, but I think that it would just be a good step in the right direction, so.
Is that something you want us to bring back on another agenda?
Well, it's the will of the Commission at this point.
Typically, according to protocol, something like that would need to be brought back, not policy.
I understand that. I mean, if everyone will consider this, I would like to have a broader discussion about the possibility and that sort of thing.
I think that's worthwhile. I would, the last time we discussed a COCA appointment, I was caught up in, as I recall, some difficulty. And I think, having served on that board, whoever we appoint should be vetted through this commission, whether that's a mayoral appointment or through the commission, so I wholeheartedly support at least that discussion, Commissioner Miller, so perhaps we could...
Before you push that, before you, he's ready to pound the.
No, I have something.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, go ahead. I have one thing I wanted to mention.
I just want to caveat that I don't want it to be me that gets appointed to that.
No, this wouldn't be, I'm not talking about...
I just learned around y'all. You gave me CRTPA, financial viability, so I'm getting that out there.
I can't believe.
Don't get any ideas.
Well, Commissioner Ziffer really made a lot of headway there, and then passed it along to me in good shape. Thank you very much.
Yes. So having said that, the city manager is wearing purple, and she doesn't know that she wore that for a reason, because quite frankly, she didn't wear it for a reason, but I'm bringing this up because we have more pianos coming out this year, but instead of pink, in bringing recognition to a fight against breast cancer, this year, the pianos will be raising as much awareness as we can for the fight against Alzheimer's disease. So we have 16 to 20 purple pianos that will be going out actually much earlier this year, sometime around November 2nd to November 5th or 6th, that will be going out in the community, and we look forward to people playing purple pianos all around Tallahassee. Madam City Manager?
I just wanted to remind the public that on Saturday, the farewell event for Mayor John Marks, who has served for 12 years, will be at Cascade Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the public is invited.
And having said that, I can say with great confidence that I will not be serving in the mayor's position on that date, that he will absolutely, positively be there, whether he's feeling better or not. Any other comments, then? Meeting is adjourned.